All right. All right, want to welcome everybody to the June 11th, 2012 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, we have four items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item, but once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Cindy, are there any public comment cards? Sure. Cindy, where's the cards at? We're going to go ahead and skip over to item number two and come back to item number one, just a little bit.
Want to hear, to the extent we've got comment cards, do you want to hear the comments now or do you want to hear them with the agenda item that they?
I would say we hear them with the agenda item.
With the agenda item? Okay. Okay, so you can start with agenda item number two.
Number two.
So Cindy.
Okay, I'm just waiting for Michelle, she can have the first one.
I bet she'll do a fine job with it.
Good evening, mayor and council. Michelle, MacIntosh-Ross and myself are here to talk about the Sustainable Practices Program that we've been working on that's in conjunction with the A R C's Green Community Certification. We've spent a couple of years actually working on this and we have finally, let me see here, finally submitted that application, May 25th. It ended up being a couple hundred pages long with all the documentation that we needed to support the different measures that we were applying for. So, come on up, Michelle.
Good stall, Cindy, good stall.
All right. Okay, well, here's some of the work that we've completed since our last update when we came before you in February. We completed a telework and compressed work week policy that's in our employee manual. We've installed a rain barrel at each of the fire stations. We've met with Winter Construction to understand the green building features that they're working on. We've completed a draft of the Sustainable Practices Resolution that will support all of these measures. And we have submitted our application to the A R C for the bronze level. Just to give you an idea of some of the things that we've done in terms of energy efficiency, we had Sony Electric Membership Corporation and Cobb come over to our three fire stations and give us an idea of what we could do to update our energy conservation measures there. And we have submitted this to Bob Edgar and he's taking a look at it. He said some of the things he'll be able to accomplish fairly quickly, some of the things he'll be putting in his budget. They're simple things and stuff that you might even be doing at home, changing out the air conditioner units, the accordion pleated cloth type air conditioner units, putting in better seals. They noticed that lights were left on in the restroom, so we might want to consider the occupancy sensors, so when they walk out, those lights go off. The bay lights on in the bay could be turned off during the day because they really don't do any kind of efficient lighting at that point. Turning off lights in computers when not in use. So, those were pretty standard in all the fire stations. We've installed three rain barrels. They're going to be painted, so they're not going to be the white plastic. But basically, they're going to retain water for use in our landscape watering. And our idea is to have a community group adopt each of our fire stations. We have one group already that's going to be adopting the Thompson Fire Station, Young Men's Service League, to connect the fire station to the community and also to be able to do some beautification work and other projects that that station might need. In order to really accumulate a lot of water, if we were to take a look at accumulating enough to wash our trucks with, because I think that went out. Anyway, that basically is going to take, that'll take like 300 gallons of water a day if we wanted to accumulate water to wash trucks. So, we're not going to be able to do that with just a rain barrel. We'll have to look at a rain harvesting system if you all are interested in that. We've installed a recycling station that's in the community development area and that's going to collect HopeLine cell phones or Verizon. It will have inkjet and printer cartridges and batteries. So that's open to the public, so our residents can come in and drop those off too, as well as city staff. And that was a requirement for green communities. So, some of the things that we're going to be doing in the public safety building, and I'll just preface it by saying that these are aspirations for us to do, they're not necessarily carved in stone. Carter's been working long and hard with both the design team and also with Winter Construction to see what we can do that will really be taking this building to a sustainable level, not necessarily a LEED certification, but doing things that are really going to make it as green as possible. So, the things that they're looking at are work in the bio retention areas below and above grade, a light colored roofing material on part of the building that will reflect the light and be a lot more efficient for heating and cooling. Preferred parking for fuel-efficient vehicles and people that are carpooling will get that front row spot. High-efficiency lighting that are controlled with the occupancy sensors and low-flow plumbing fixtures. In addition, they'll have a minimal landscape. There won't be a whole lot of area to landscape there, but that area that will be landscaped will be done with native plants, which would be more sustainable and use a lot less water. There'll be a storage and collection area for recyclables. Winter Construction does an excellent job in really recovering the construction materials that are left over from the job. They have a 97% recovery rate where those materials are diverted individually by product to different companies for reuse or for recycling. The building materials used in the building are going to be purchased within a 500-mile radius of Atlanta. The company is going to provide news updates for us that we can communicate to the community about what's going on with the building and throughout the construction phase and all the sustainable features that we'll be putting in it. And if we don't get a LEED certification, we will definitely still have the opportunity to have a sustainability plaque put on the building where we can list specifically those items in our building that will be sustainable, so we can really show the community that we are, you know, we have done those things and we are looking at being as sustainable as possible. Okay, and Michelle's going to talk about the resolution that we'll need to have you all adopt for some of our new policies.
In this process, we worked on a green resolution, which you should have in your pockets. We have policies in there that lines up with the A R C certification that they presented to us. So, for instance, the first one dealt with green building policies and what we've done is just have a statement in there that speaks to the measures that we as a city plan to do as far as making our construction of city buildings more efficient. So, we're just going to make a statement from ourselves as far as what we're going to do, as opposed to saying that we're going to do the LEED and probably not get in there. So, that's the first one. We also have some other measures, policies that speaks to lights down and power down for the evenings. Also, measures dealing with rainwater and reuse, as you can see with the rain barrels that we installed at the fire stations. We have a resolution item that talks about the designating space for community gardens at the Hope House that we bought. We're thinking that we could designate that and have a community garden there as we move on. And, you know, if it does proceed to be a senior center, it'll be a good place for community garden, for seniors to have a garden there. Also, government, no idle policy. It'll just be a policy statement that we wouldn't idle vehicles. We are allowed to exempt the fire, sorry, the police vehicles, so that helps. Also, the environmentally preferable purchasing policies. We've already noticed that we already purchased 30% post-consumer recycled paper. All of our paper is already 30%, and that's one of the requirements to have is 30% post-consumer recycled paper. So if we could just write a policy that says that we will continue to do that and that shouldn't be too hard. So, you know, that's some of the things that we've put in the resolution that we'll take questions on later. So if you have any questions, we'll get there as soon as we get through this. The next phase is for the council meeting on July 2nd. We will have the resolution hopefully seeking to adopt. Also, there are measures that we will continue to work on in the interim because we have until October 31st to complete all of these measures that we said we were going to do. So we'll continue and work on things like putting bike racks at all community facilities as well as working on a no net loss of tree policy. And hopefully, we'll have all of this done by October 31st. And then, A R C will present the awards December of 2012. If all goes well during the summer, they will call us and let us know if they need any additional information from us. They will also come by to check on some of the items that we said that we had, so they will just make sure that those things are in place. And if all goes well, we'll be accepted. And so we should be getting a plaque in December, I hope. Anything else? Before we move on, I just want to introduce, we have an intern, our community development intern, right over here. His name is Will Check and he is from Blessed Trinity High School in Roswell, and he's a Milton resident, and he's helping our community development through the summer. And one of his projects is the National Wildlife Federation Community Habitat Certification for Milton, and so he'll talk just a little bit about that.
How's it going, Will? I'm heading up the project for Habitat Community and we're working with the N W F to get the certification and Cindy and Michelle are helping me out and working really hard. We're going before council, probably a couple of meetings from now, and we're actually meeting with Chris. I don't know if he knows about it yet, but maybe meeting with him on Friday. Get some signatures down so we can go ahead and go forth with the certification. And we actually have to get registered first before we go on with the certification process, so we're going to be working hard, so. Thank you.
Okay, so Cindy and I are here if you could answer any questions.
Any questions for Cindy or Michelle?
I got a question.
Bert?
On Exhibit A, where we talked about the green building policy, would it, since, and you stated in here and you stated that we're not necessarily going to go after LEED or this, that, or the other, shouldn't, could we change that to something else other than LEED policy?
You mean try to go for a certification that wouldn't be LEED? Bert, is that what you're going to do?
Well, I mean, just change, I know that, I know that what you're saying is that we're going to go after different, different classifications in LEED, you know, I know the other people have had more than I know about it, but it isn't necessarily the best or the easiest. So let's just call it, you know, green building policy.
Sustainable building policy, yeah.
Not just call it the trade name, even though we may go after that or we may go after EarthCraft or something else.
Okay, the reason that we had to put that in is because the A R C really will only give us points if we are going to a LEED standard in our building, building policy. So, we were hoping that they might give us a little bit of partial credit in the fact that we, while we may not be commissioning our building as a LEED certified project, we are going to be doing a lot of the things that would qualify us to be a LEED project and we'll show them specifically for that.
So they only recognize the LEED standards, none of the other?
Yes, correct. Energy, you do get some for the light, like commercial EarthCraft homes also, I mean, excuse me, building for, if we were to go for that, but my impression is we're not going to really be focused on the end result. We're going to be focused on the sustainability features of the building. If that happens to get us to a LEED level and we come back to you and say, listen, to get that, that LEED certification is going to cost us $30,000 of commissioning, are you willing to go for that, then that would be your option. But at this point, with the constraints of the budget, it doesn't look like we're really going to have the luxury of doing that.
And I agree, you know, I agree with that. So I guess we have to keep it LEED just to make them satisfied, somewhat satisfied, even though we're?
It was, it was worded that way because that's what they were asking for, and they're not going to necessarily get everything that they're asking for, but hopefully they'll give us a little bit of extra credit.
Gotcha.
Lance, question?
A couple of things. At the public safety building, we talked about that. Is there, I didn't hear what you were going over, considerations for H V A C systems. I mean, that's where you can get some of your, most of your points, a lot of points.
Correct.
In type of H V, the H V A C systems that you put in the building. Is that being looked at in terms of?
I might not have really listed everything that was on there. That was definitely big, a big one. At this point, Winter Construction said that they felt that we had sort of a base level, if we were just looking at LEED, we had a base level of LEED certification with what they are considering doing for us. It isn't, as I said, it's not carved in stone yet. Carter, over the next month, said he's really going to be working hard to bring some closure to those things. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add about the H V A C, Carter?
Well, not to get into too much detail on it, at this point, we have looked at a couple of different systems on that and really it's the overall rate of return that we're looking at between the chiller systems and the standard rooftop unit systems. And so, as we move through our construction, design development and construction document development, we'll be evaluating that, but we're looking at it really on a long-term, 15- to 20-year return basis, which one works best for the city.
Yeah, it's follow, I mean, that's the way you really have to look at it, is on a 10- to 20-year lifecycle, because you may spend money, more money initially, but within 10 years, we may have saved a lot of money because of the operation cost of the systems. I mean, a lot of times when you're looking at LEED or green building type programs, you have to look at it from the sense of not just initial building cost, but the lifecycle cost as well. Rainwater harvesting too would be something that could be, probably maybe be employed into the public safety building as well.
We've looked at that to some degree also, and ultimately, I think on the rainwater collection system, it'll come down to cost.
Right.
The substantial system that Cindy was talking about where it really provides a large volume of water was, also comes with a large cost. And on this particular site where we're, we're short on space both above and below ground, it was really one of those things that was very difficult to work into the overall plan. So to fall back and look at more issues, more, more, the rain barrels and the surface type things is probably where we'll end up with rain collection systems.
Have another one. The idling program, no idling. Is that going to pertain to our police vehicles as well? But I've had a conversation with the sister.
To some degree, I can answer that. To some degree, it can't. There's necessary and unnecessary idling and in the, on the perfect temperature day, we don't need to keep those cabin temperatures where they are, but yeah, to some degree in the, in the heart of the winter and the heart of the summer, we've got to keep the cabin temperature so that the equipment that's in there doesn't malfunction. And that's what causes some of that idling to occur.
What we talk about here, because they're our city vehicles and we're saying no idling.
We're saying no unnecessary idling.
Okay.
And I would argue that that's necessary idling. It's kind of the way I've.
I think she said, I'll say.
She said that they exempt, the police vehicles were exempt from the no idling. Bill?
Perhaps either Cindy or Carter can answer it too. In Article 5, when your transportation and air quality, subarticle, that community bicycle and pedestrian plan, has the public safety building been incorporated into our overall trail plan?
I'm not sure how to answer that one. From the standpoint that Highway 9 is part of the overall Trail Master Plan, it is included. There's not necessarily specific reference to the public safety facility in the plan, but the facility will have bike, bike racks, those things that will, we decided to include trail, but it's not specifically called that in the way.
No horse trail.
No horse trail.
And the bikes will also have preferred parking.
I like that. Anybody else? No?
You mentioned compliance with the Georgia Energy Code. You look at it, any specific enhancements to the building envelope there as far as increased insulation and reflectivity, low-e glass?
We will be looking at all of those through the construction document phase.
Thank you very much, Michelle, Cindy, Carter. We'll, Cindy, we'll go back to item number one.
Item number one is update regarding the city of Milton's tax assessments.
Do you have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We'd like to welcome David Fitzgibbon.
Well, I apologize for being late. I had it on my schedule for 6:30. I thought I had a little time to prepare, so please accept my apology. And I appreciate the opportunity to come out and talk to you. I was just talking with Stacy and I also didn't have time to bring my stuff from the office, but I'm sure your question is where your digest is going. It did look like you were in the areas that we did have some increases in, and based on figures I've got, it looked like you picked up about $70 million in total value for this area. And that would be, of course, subject to appeal, and I'm sure we'll have a number from anyone that raised, got their values that saw an increase this year, just for information purposes. We did have approximately 2,600, I'm sorry, 26,800 and something parcels that did see an increase in value from 2011 to 2012. And the majority of those were in more affluent areas, which Milton, Sandy Springs, Alpharetta, and Johns Creek had most of those increases, although we did see some other neighborhoods and other parts of the county that did show some increasing values. Overall, we saw a net decrease in the total countywide tax digest of about 3.5% overall. But we do have some pockets that have done extremely well where we saw increasing sales. And it looks like that for the city of Milton, that you've done a little bit better and saw a total increase in value. And naturally, that's subject to any appeals that we had. If you look at the historical data, you'd see that we have a little less than 10% in almost every jurisdiction, some of them a little bit more, some of them a little bit less in percentage, and a net reduction from that appeals process through the Board of Equalization in Courts of around 14%. So if you figure that that process holds true for what you have here, and the past pattern holds, about 85% of what you see right there should be net to you after it's all shaken out. So that might be some good news. I wouldn't go out and buy a new building until you kind of see the process work a little bit better. Any specific questions you might have about the digest figure?
I have a question. I've gotten comments from citizens that about their values going up and in their mind, they're not seeing the market go up and they're still seeing prices depressed. How do you justify that?
That's always the question that we get, and of course, Fulton County being a little bit more than 70 miles from north to south and having over 335,000 taxable parcels, when you look at things on an average, you are looking at properties, residential properties in the seven, eight, $10 million range, on down to the $10,000 range. So, when you look at the overall figures and what you see in the news media that says that Casey and Chiller and some other folks say that values are down, in general, that's rather true, but those figures are looking strictly at sales and listings of property currently, with sales and listings of properties in the same period of year before. And it doesn't really put things in the same term of what we have to do by law, which is a price property at what we feel it would sell for on January 1st of each year. So when we collect all of our data throughout 2011 and analyze it and use the data that we're either required to by law or that looks like good data to us, then those are the values on even a sub-neighborhood basis that we put down on the paper. And there were some pockets that we saw significant increases on sales from prior years. Last week, I was in another jurisdiction and it was very obvious that the values had been dropping because most of that activity was foreclosure sales. And believe it or not, that group of about 50 people were angry because they thought we dropped their property values too low. And again, we don't either raise or lower values, we just try to set them at what the data tells us that the property should sell for. And in certain, again, some of the smaller pockets, we are seeing properties sell for more. We had one particular neighborhood, rather small, where we saw prices over the past three years go from an average of around $800,000 to an average of about $1.2 million in the sales that we saw in 2011. So, there are people buying property, the inventories are down. Overall, when you just look at the overall average, it's like any average, the number in the middle still shows a decrease, and that's what we're seeing from a lot of places. We certainly would encourage anyone that saw an increase in their value, if they don't feel like it was worth that, to contact us. At this point, I'd say probably need to go ahead and file an appeal so that we don't lose the place in mind if they have not. Let us look at it, let us review it and see if there's anything that we can turn. We need to support it as we're required to by law in the appeals process with a preponderance of evidence, or we'll look at it and see if we can change. We did have one subdivision in particular of about 50 properties that we had five very good sales, that appeared to be very good sales, and we raised value to what those sales indicated. And in further examination of that, it turned out that all the sales were of a better quality house and a better quality of the subdivision and lakefront property. And although we did have that taken into consideration, that they were lakefront versus non-waterfront, we had made an error in what we called the quality grade of the house. We corrected that and we're in the process of preparing to send out 15 new notices to all those property owners with an additional 45 days to appeal that. You know, it's always bad to look at averages, but you know, the news media does that, so we always hopefully can answer that question, if not to your happiness, to the satisfaction anyway.
Question?
Bert?
What is the, I know it's in the packet that the homeowners are mailing, but what's the appeal timeline and whatnot?
The appeal period is 45 days from the date on the notice. We mailed all but about 1,200 notices. We had some that were still in the process of having changes made, and we mailed some corrective notices where we did find some errors. But the appeal period is 45 days from the date on the notice. The last date of the appeal from the majority of those, 331,000, some of our notices we sent out on the 14th is June 28th.
Okay.
And on any notice that anyone received after that, it would be 45 days from that day. We'd like to say we hopefully have made it a lot easier this year. I know we've had some complaints about the appeals process. It is very lengthy, once they go past us and when we get so many to process. We are doing online appeals this year where if you get onto our website, and I hope you've had an opportunity, if you are interested, to get on our new website with our new enhancements. We have features where you can search sales in your neighborhood or by taxing district. We also have a comparative thing. You can put it into an Excel spreadsheet and sort it, print mailing address labels from it. You can list it and do a sales search by square footage, by some other criteria. And if you want to file an appeal, we have an online appeals tab. if you want to file an appeal, we have an online appeals tab, and all you really need to do is fill in a couple of blanks, hit submit, and we have a record, you have a record, and it goes in, and we're able to process those a little quicker. I've asked myself, my staff, to prepare some statistics. It looks like so far, we're on track by doing this process. If everyone that continues to appeal throughout the period in the same percentages that have, we'll probably save a few hundred thousand dollars in hard copy costs and so forth. And one of my staffs said it looked like over a million dollars. They said, "Let's get some hard figures before we brag about it." But I think it will do a number of things. It's going to save the taxpayers a significant amount of money in that we don't have to go through all of that copying and reproduction cost. It'll save the staff a lot of time, and allow our staff to spend more time working with each appeal to be able to get what we really need worked out, to get the correct figures out there. So I would encourage everybody that has not to get on the site. If they have any problem with the values, contact us. If you just want to ask questions, the appraisers' email is available. Email me or one of the other supervisors, and we'll be glad to look into it.
And everybody's eligible to do an online appeal?
Everyone, everyone's eligible to do an online appeal, of course, if they have not had their period expired.
Thank you, yeah.
Lance?
Just, I don't know if you can answer this, but say, within the whole county, and I don't know, percentage basis by worth or number, how much in terms of bank-owned properties within Fulton County is there, say, when you did your evaluation?
As far as bank-owned property right now, I don't have a count on that. We did have some statistics a little earlier that out of our total property count of the 300, I think it's 334,800 taxable properties, and out of those, about 7.6% of all the sales we have that were foreclosure-type sales, or, I'm sorry, total properties were sold as a foreclosure sale. We had over 60% of all of our sales were some kind of a distressed sale. And right now, of course, the law requires us, after Senate Bill 346, to use distressed-type sales, except for straight foreclosures, as the sales price for the following year. And naturally, all the foreclosure activity we've seen is affecting everyone's values, so that should bring some of them down.
And then in Milton itself, do you have some, any numbers as far as within the city of Milton?
I'm sorry, I don't. I tried to give that, and if you'd like, I'd be glad to get that figures and send it to someone. Mark?
I can give you some information if you can send it to me instead of behind.
He can send it to me, I'll send it out to him.
Okay, I'll be good.
Yeah, we can send you the figures on how, what percentage of the parcel count you have, what percentage of the foreclosures was there. And I can give you some more exact figures about what we're seeing as far as the exact amount of percentage we saw in decrease. And at this point, we don't have enough appeals in. We hope we have all the appeals we're going to get, but that's not likely with two or three more weeks to go. But I will say that this year, we have only received, at this point, under 3,000 appeals, and at this point last year, we've seen, received about 17,000 appeals. So we're hoping that's a trend. We did notice, again, we emphasize, we don't raise or lower values, but set values, but the ones that did see a decrease was about 153,000 of our total parcels saw a decrease in value, about 149,000 parcels stayed the same, and about 26,000 saw an increase in value. And that was commercial, residential, industrial, all together. So we have about the same percentage and number that stayed the same and it decreased.
One, the final question. On the appeal, they, what's the process once you file the appeal, someone files the appeal, what's the process?
Once the appeal comes to us, we, another thing we're doing this year, if someone wants to come in and talk to us face-to-face, we're setting hearing times. They can come in, sit down with their appraiser. We have a 20-minute time period by appointment only so we can accommodate everybody and keep them having long lines and delays. So once we receive the appeal, if you indicate you would like to have an in-person interview, we'll contact the appellant, we'll try to find out a good time, set an appointment. Once they come in and talk to us, if we can agree on any changes that need to be made there, we'll agree to that value, we'll sign off. It will still be subject to the Board of Assessor's final approval at the next meeting. And at that point in time, it should be settled. If you don't either come in and talk to us but desire to have a telephone interview, give us a number. We call you at the appointed time, and the process works the same. If we agree, we send you something, either email or snail mail, to agree to withdraw the appeal at a set value. If you have an outstanding appeal from 2011, and you agree to that value, or we can agree to that value online or in person, we'll settle both years and just ask you to sign an agreement. And if, once we get to that hearing or that date and time, it should only take a half hour to get everything settled. If it comes in in the mail, or we don't talk to you in person, it will kind of get worked as we do. We try to, to those we don't have any information on, if you don't tell us why you're appealing, we'll try to group those in a subdivision so that we can look at our neighborhood code. And if we have a number of appeals, we'll try to figure out what's happening. Maybe we've missed some information, maybe we've misinterpreted, maybe we just made an error in our calculations or our opinion. And if there are enough appeals that come in, we try to review all of them together so we'll have a better idea about what's happening. And if it's indicated that we should, we'll change the whole neighborhood and send everybody an e-mail notice on those. But it should take, last year, to give you some idea, because we really don't know yet, with the 38,000 appeals that we received, we worked all of those at the Board of Assessors in under 250 days. This year, my staff seems to be telling me that we should be through with everything, maybe in mid, late September, which would be about 180 days at the very most. We certainly hope that's true, because we hope we don't get as many appeals, and we hope when we do get them, we're able to process them quicker, and we're able to work out a value that we can both agree on as a fair value. I would say that if someone has appealed already, if they haven't heard from us, if they wanted an in-person or telephone interview, by the end of next week, it would probably be within the next three or four weeks. If someone vows the last day, it probably will be on closer to then August or September before we can sketch something like that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
A lot of words to tell you that I didn't know.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We've got a couple.
Yeah, David, what is, do you by chance keep track of what the average tax assessed value is on per-acre basis of a property in Fulton County?
Since most of the properties on the residential property are assessed on a pro-lot basis, because most of it is in recorded subdivisions or that type of thing, we still have some raw acreage, but we really don't have an average, because there's so much difference in the size, location, and the factors of each property. We can do that on a neighborhood basis, if we know what neighborhood, and I'd be glad to try to do that. If you have a smaller neighborhood or a larger neighborhood, we could probably break that down to what the average lot value is. Most of our properties that are subdivided or residential-type properties, the land value is generally going to be in the neighborhood of 30 to 40% of the total overall value. In the north part and in the south part of the county, where the average value is in $100,000 to $150,000 range, it'll probably be more like 20 to 25% of the overall value. Just kind of a rule of thumb that looks like playing out. I'd be glad to look that up for you. If you could, you can send me an email, ask me about a specific, and I can give you some answers on that.
How do we get your email?
Oh, you can, our website is fultonassessor.org. It's got all of my contact information on there. And my direct email is my name, David Fitzgibbon, it's david.fitzgibbon@fultonassessorcountyga.gov. I'm sorry. And I'll get all of that, my phone numbers and all are on the website, which if you, you get on the internet, it's probably the easiest thing to do. You can click on this and you're directly.
Do you keep track of the trends of those property values as well? I know the National Board of Realtors usually does as well, and Atlanta has seen still prices drop. Throughout the country is one of three areas that's been doing that. I just wasn't sure if you're seeing that in your tax assessments as well, and if you see any kind of a floor happening on those.
We do, we do keep track. It's something because we strictly deal with by law, what's the property worth on January 1st. We look at what we have. A good comparison is looking back from 2009, 10, and 11. From 2009 to 2010, over 49% of the properties decreased in value. About, I think it was about 14% from 2010 to 2011, 52% of the properties saw a decrease with an average decrease of around, I think it was nine and a half percent on our record. We try not to deal in those percentages because it's such a broad base of stuff that's different, and it is so segmented, and it's so local in some areas. We see some areas that where gentrification is occurring, and some people are buying property strictly for the land value to tear down the house and build a new one. I think they turn those into mansions in some places. And those are very smaller pockets. East Point area was one that's been happening for a few years, we see a large increase in values in some little pockets there, but not over the whole area. But again, I'd be glad to try to get those calculations. I have a very good person at my standards division that can run just about any report. We've got data on, and we'll be glad to do it for you as a city, or for individuals if it's not too complicated. And we do keep a lot of that handy, just to not pull other stuff up in the career in comparison. Glad to do that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it to chance. And again, apologize for being late, and if you have any other questions, please get in touch with me. You're happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to move on to agenda item number three. Do we have any public comment on that item?
My secretary. This is discussion of Part Five, Environmental Planning Criteria, presented by Carter Vines.
Good evening. This is an initial meeting for an ordinance on the adoption of the environmental planning criteria, also known as the Part Five standards. And we'll be bringing this forward, hopefully, in August for adoption. These criteria are some environmental criteria that were established by the Department of Natural Resources and are coming at us from two different locations. Part of it is a requirement of our comprehensive plan that we adopt this criteria, as well as our requirements under the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. The criteria are basically broken out into five different categories. The protection of water supply watersheds, groundwater recharge areas, wetland protection, river corridor protection, and mountain protection. And what I'd like to do is just kind of highlight some of the criteria in each of those, in case you have any future comments when we bring this forward. The water supply watershed, it focuses on two different ones. Large watersheds, which are over 100 square miles, and small water supply watersheds, which are under 100 square miles. And in our particular case, it's the city of Roswell, water intake on Big Creek that is the concern for us. It's a small watershed, right at about 99 acres. And if you look at the first exhibit that you have in this package, the big green area identifies the drainage basin associated with that water intake. On that exhibit, you'll also see a black arc. That is the seven-mile radius that is referenced in the planning criteria. That is of interest to us. And then if you go to the second exhibit on that, I've taken the green off to give you a little bit of idea about where that seven-mile radius falls in relationship to the city of Milton. And when we look at that seven-mile radius, everything inside that radius on a perennial stream would require a buffer of 100 feet undisturbed and 150 feet of impervious setback. So it's essentially double what our current buffers are. The fortunate part of that is there are no qualifying streams in Milton under that seven-mile radius. So what the criteria says, within that seven miles, you have to have the larger buffers. Outside the seven miles, you drop down to the smaller buffer, which is the 50-foot undisturbed, 75-foot impervious setback, which is what we currently have adopted. So the long and short of it is, in the end, our buffer standards don't change with this particular criteria. That, the water supply watershed then goes on to talk about some specific land use criteria that would be restricted within that basin, sanitary landfills, hazardous waste treatment and disposal facilities. None of those that, the areas within this particular area of interest would be something I think that we would be concerned with. So the other criteria in there is the restriction on the overall watershed, 25% impervious. So that overall watershed includes Johns Creek, Roswell, Alpharetta, a small part of Milton, Forsyth County, and a little bit of Cherokee County. The second area of protection is the criteria of groundwater recharge areas. If you look at the third exhibit, the area in blue on the very southern end of the city is the only area in Milton that that is covered under what would be considered a significant groundwater recharge area. And so the area of this particular criteria would be limited just to that area. And basically, this talks about sanitary sewer versus septic. So those properties that may be on septic within that particular area would have to be 110% of the current size. For those of the lots, it would be a little bit larger for any septic areas in that groundwater recharge area. I think most of that area is probably sewer, but there could be some lots within that zone that might fall under this criteria. And then it again talks about some limitations on land uses, which in those particular areas probably wouldn't be a big concern for us. The third criteria is wetland protection. And this criteria is also shown on that third exhibit, for the areas in green and the areas in blue would be the ones that would be protected or at least evaluated under this particular criteria. And the wetlands protection really requires us to adopt the wetland map as it's shown on this and developed by the state as part of our land use plan. And so community development will go through a modification of the comp plan and the land use plan to show these wetland areas on that map. And then as we work through land use properties or land use considerations, there are a number of criteria that we would look at to just evaluate whether or not a potential land use would have an adverse impact on any wetlands or open waters within the city. And then finally, the last two criteria are river corridor protection and mountain protection. In this particular case, the river corridor protection is associated with rivers that have an average annual flow of 400 CFS or greater. Once again, we're fortunate in that we don't have any rivers within the city of Milton that meet that criteria, so we would be exempted from that particular one, as well as the mountain protection area. This protects areas above 2,200 feet in elevation. And again, the city of Milton doesn't have any areas above that elevation, so we would be exempted from that one. And that's it. We'll be looking to bring these, this ordinance with the adoption of the first three of those criteria forward, most likely in August.
Okay. Any questions for Carter?
Going to the wetland protection, since we're going to have to review our comprehensive land use plan to make it conform with this.
We'll be updating our land use map to indicate the areas that have been identified by the state as wetland areas. And so as land uses come in through rezonings or any kind of comprehensive land use evaluation, we would have to look at whether or not those uses have any impact on wetlands that may be shown on that map.
It's a case-by-case basis. We're not going to do an overall review at this time.
That's, that's correct. Each site would also be responsible ultimately for permitting. So even if a wetland isn't shown on the map, if a site has specific wetlands on it, they'll still be responsible to go through local and federal permitting processes.
Anybody else? Thank you, Carter. See, clerk, we'll call the next item.
We do have two public comments. The first one is from Miss Rhonda Thomas.
Just call the items.
Call the, call the item.
RZ 1208, Discussion of Form Based Code and Transfer of Development Rights.
Typically before the agenda item, we'd like to hear comments before we discuss it.
I'm Richard Thomas, and I'm just a citizen here. I live at 12518 Roedler Road in Milton, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. And I came early, I came to some of the earlier meetings, and I was looking for an opportunity really to understand more about the program and the overall comprehensive plan. I guess I looked and saw that it was a working session, and I brought questions more than I did presentation. So I'm probably going to have to kind of reverse and maybe ask some of the questions and rhetorically answer some of those. But I'll be glad to come with the presentation, but that would have much, much better, it would have been much easier for me to present to you than I thought that it was going to be a working session and asking some of the questions. But in the earlier presentations, when I came and we were talking about the comprehensive plan, and a lot of the things that were being done, and raised the question on zoning and why a huge plan was done, and a comprehensive plan and total why a huge plan was done and a comprehensive plan and totally changing the zoning, changing everything about all of the zoning for Crab Apple. And when I looked around, it looks like Crab Apple and Milton are probably some of the nicest areas to live in, that our zoning is doing extremely well, and it must be working. So the question was, why, if it's working what we have today, do we want to change the entire program? Do we want to invest huge amounts of dollars in doing that? And as I asked some of the questions, that one of the reasons was not that the zoning wasn't working, but the zoning was not able to accomplish one of the things that they wanted to do, and it was the control of property. That property was identified as one of the nice, beautiful resources that we have here and that we want to control that. And I thought, gee, you know, why would we do that? And why do we want to control it? Who wants to control it? And I hear, well, everybody would like to control the property that's out there and keep the beauty the way it is. But I don't think it's ever come to the question to say, well, if you want to control that property, why don't you buy it with tax dollars? Why don't you use the resources of the citizens? Why don't you allow the citizens to vote on it? Anytime you ask somebody, would you like to preserve something? Would you like to have that land over there? Would you like to keep it for all of us? That the answer's going to be sure. If I don't have to pay for it, I think that would be great. And then the, as that arose, there was one, something that came up that I'd never heard before, which was a TDR. And I don't know if I, if I ask each one of you to go along the table, they'll be voting and say, can you tell me what a TDR is? Can you tell me exactly and define that? If we would have unanimously that each one of you would tell me exactly that what that transferable development right is, and how is that defined, and how is it used, and why is it being used? But as I looked at that, and this was being proposed, that some definitions came up to me. And zoning is designed to allow development in areas where city resources can support growth. Maximum development is approved based on the resources that are available. Is that pretty close to a definition for zoning that you guys have? I'll go on then. And I guess downzoning was another term that I had never heard of before. And the downzoning approach, and downzoning is only allowing a baseline or minimum development, not what is approved or actually what can be supported from the city resources that are available to that property. So downzoning is used in this new TDR program, transferable development rights, to be able to create need for a TDR. And it seems that this is something that is strange. And instead of using tax dollars, we say that this is a free and open way to allow the market to pay for preserving the property that we want to preserve. But, you know, I guess one of the things that the TDR concerns me is that it may affect the taking law. The Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution reads in part, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." Traditionally, a taking was defined as physical seizure of the property by the state. But in 1922, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that the government interference in the form of excessive regulation may be so burdensome to a landowner as to have the same effect as actually physical invasion, thus establishing the regulatory taking. And that landzoning falls into this broad kind of legal murky category as regulatory taking. So all of a sudden, that we're going from this free enterprise of switch and swap and trading TDRs to, into something that might be considered a taking of property. And when you look at this, you know, are we, are we attempting to create a market for something that doesn't exist by downzoning? You know, what's the value of a TDR? In the last meeting that we had and that we asked that question, there were several different answers. No one in the room could say specifically what the value of a TDR was. No one could tell me who sets the value of a TDR. And if a TDR is free exchange between a seller and a buyer in the landing area and the selling area, why then does a value has to be established on that? Does a private property owner receive TDR for transferable development rights for property in a watershed program? The answer was, in the meeting that we had the last time, was no, they would not. It was already controlled by the government, so we don't need to control that. So no, you wouldn't get any rights for that. So somebody had water area within their land, and they'd like to have TDRs, they can't participate in the majority of it because it's already controlled by the government. And it said it's participation in the TDR program mandatory for buyers and sellers. And of course, the answer was no, that it is a voluntary program. But in the Athens Grow Green Coalition, one of their quotes is, "The most successful TDR programs are mandatory." And most of the TDR programs that are there that started in 1980 and have some kind of history with them have not been successful. Most of them have been plagued with problems that have had very little success, but it is a huge investment. You know, and if I can develop the land to approve capacity, why do I need to purchase a TDR? And it's only because the government is forcing me to. So why do I want to do that? And why is it? If I choose, if no one chooses to participate in the program, how do you create demand for TDRs? And I think I've already answered that question with the downzoning and the forcing of that. And will the city purchase TDRs if there's no demand? That in one of the cases, in many of the cases that are cited, the city has created, created and purchases TDRs for doing that. In fact, one of the questions I had is, do you anticipate licensing and authorizing brokers for marketing and sales of TDRs, which you've had to do in many of the other locations? Who will administer the TDR program transactions for the city? Is there a TDR purchase fee, a recording fee? Is there a sale of TDR taxed at the current sales rates today? Because in most of the documents that I've seen and read, that they say that this, the TDR and the transfer of the development right is the same thing or equal to, just like if the land itself were being sold. So is it going to be taxed, each one of those TDRs? And the funds for that transfer are going to be taxed for the buyer and the seller on those TDRs that are going on? Will the program require the creation of a city TDR bank like other cities that are set up? Do you anticipate the speculators purchasing TDRs to control the development of the city? And are you going to have to regulate that to prevent the speculators from holding and controlling and preventing development in areas until they can get the price they want for it? Could be far more damaging than the process that is valued that you get from it. Would you consider TDRs as a complex plan, both implementation and management? What is the cost to the taxpayer to rezone and create a TDR program? I would be interested to know how much you've already spent on all of the consulting fees and all the plans and having documents that are this huge. And I know that many of the documents and a lot of the zoning is derived from a central location.
One minute on the clock, sir.
So what is the projected cost of the additional staff to educate, manage, and administer? Does the plan include a local festival rights ordinance? And one of the bills in Georgia state law, that laws 859 requires that a local transferable development right ordinance be set up and be managed. You know, the sale of the TDR is considered permanent. This is good and it's bad. You get to control it, but once it's permanent, then you can't change it. So if the change in conditions from five to 10 years from now dictate that it should be something different, the government's out of luck because you turn that property over and the government controls it. And I mean, there's a whole host of other things that go through, and I was asking, a lot of those is, you know, how much? Is this like a tax? Is it like a transferable? I could go on and on and on, but it just seems to be that, you know, there is a desire to control land. How much land do you want to control? How much do you control today? How many acres do you control? What percent of the open land do you control today? What percent's controlled by the city, the federal government? How much do you want to control? What is enough is enough to beautify for everybody that is out there. So it gets down to the thing, when I talked with Doug McCurry, that had 40 acres that now the city of Milton owns that's near Birmingham Crossroads. And when I talked with him, and he talked about them sending a letter that they'd like to buy his property, and he said, no, and Fulton County said, yes. He hired an attorney and tried to prevent it, that over the period of time, the attorney finally said, they're going to get it one way or the other. They condemned the property, they forced the sale of 40 acres. And when he said, I have never been so violated in all my life. And now that city of Milton property that is out of that area and is 40 acres, this was just absolutely an immediate need that had to take place, that they condemned it, they demanded the sale of the property.
Mr. Thomas, I'm going to ask you to stop right now. And I'll be glad to let you talk for another minute or so if you can wrap it up, if you will of the council. I don't want to, is everybody all right?
Yeah.
It was just one of those things where, was that demand in getting 40 acres for Fulton County, was that for the use of the city? And is the use the best for, or was it basically they wanted to control it? Because that was 12 years ago, and the property is still sitting there as it was when he was forced to sell it. It's never been used by county, it's never been used by the city. And I think we're going down a very slippery slope in the hope that we always have, to own a house and property and to have a yard for our children and our dogs, is absolutely going away as the government controls our property. And this is not just walkways and pathways. This is a much larger plan that I'll be glad to tell you about, how it rolls up into the United Nations Plan for Controlling the Land through the United States and around the world. And you may think I'm crazy, but I can actually give you the facts on that and show you what I mean. So thank you. I'm sorry I ran over time. Thank you very much for the opportunity to just give my thoughts and my view on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll, as we discuss it with our staff, maybe we can answer a few of your questions. Do we have another public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. Ms. Rhonda Thomas. It's a family affair. I'm Rhonda Thomas. I live on Broadlow with my sweet husband. Quickly, just to back up something he said, here are two United Nations documents that actually talk about TDRs and how they're to be used in order to take private property away. I apologize that you all have invested all the time that you have, and we haven't been a part of it. I wish we had known about it earlier, so we don't want to minimize what you all have done. You've given time, energy, and I know you've done what you feel is best, but we do have some information we want to share. This is actually a document from the U.N. dated January of this year on the review of implementation of Agenda 21, which is their 1992 Charter on Sustainable Consumption. And we fall in that. And I'm just going to read a couple of highlights. One of the defining moments of sustainable, I don't do this naturally, consumption has been the United Nations Conference on Environment and Development in 92. Agenda 21 sought to provide comprehensive blueprint and action to be taken globally, nationally, and locally in organizations of the U.N. government and major groups. It's a comprehensive blueprint for action to be taken globally. It is all about consumption. They talk about how consumption always remains high in the developed world, that's us. And they want to redistribute all of our resources, not just money. It comes down to energy, water, all of that. So basically, what I'm here to talk about is not only the plan that we have in Milton, but it's actually happening all over the country. And based on the United Nations Plan, it's called a human settlement. We tried to make it softer, and we're calling it livable communities. And within those livable communities, this is all about social equality. There will be, in fact, Midtown right now is fighting. They have gone through this entire plan, thought of as minimalized, and now there's disruption in the plan because the group is coming in and trying to put in a workforce camp, basically housing for workforce. Because basically, in our communities, which you can find on ARC's website, I actually have a map, there are boundaries drawn where our communities will exist. And that is why T-Splot is so important, because a part of this U.N. document is public transportation, and as we were talking about earlier, reducing emissions. So part of that is, they cannot complete this transportation plan until they've completed these livable communities. And if you look on the Atlanta Regional Commission site, you'll find this map. We will be within a 10-county area. These lovely triangles, circles, and squares are what make up our community. This is cradle to grave. We have our doctors. This all sounds wonderful. It's what we all want. We love this stuff, but we want it to be a free choice. Your doctors will be there, psychiatric, special hospitals, retirement homes, workforce. That is unfortunately, the bike paths and the sidewalks we love so much, there's a purpose for them. We want walkable communities. We want to be able to do everything in our community that does not require us to get in a car and drive somewhere. So if you go on the ARC's website, it falls right in with what Richard was saying, is controlling the land. We are a wealthy country, and part of why we're wealthy is we have private property. Without private property, there is no wealth to be created. So as soon as that's gone, then we are in deep trouble. Pull up your water board. Pull up everything on that website. All of this correlates. Actually, there's TDRs planned for Lake Lanier, Lake Altoona, all these places, because water needs to be kept pristine. There's a need for water. So that means that we as humans cannot affect that water. So if you go on their website, they actually talk about it. Buying property from people at basically eminent domain, paying them what it's worth, putting TDRs out there. There's a purpose for everything that's happening. Don't just look at our country. Go to Norway, go to Sweden, go to South Africa. This is a global plan. You will find the same verbiage in all these planning and just go to their, regional, by the way, is not American, it's socialist. And if you'll notice, regional is all over our country now. We were not taught that in school. But if you go to Norway and pull up regional planning and land use, go to South Africa, Sweden, all these places, you will find exactly what we're doing because there is a purpose. The U.N. took what we think is a very important subject, which is green, and they've used it against us because we are good people, we are trusting, we want things to be taken care of. It's God's creation. We're born that way. But they are actually taking it and twisting it, creating crisis with an end outcome. Go to ARC 2040. By the year 2040, on the Atlanta Regional Commission's website, you'll find what all they expect to take place. And so anyway, that is, this is another letter from the U.N. If you just Google, I've spent hours. I learned about this in 1992. I was very involved with Concerned Women for America. They were an NGO at the '92 Rio Convention on Sustainable Consumption. And every day, they reported back on her radio station the things that were taking place. No one would listen. Well, 20 years or more later, and we are so infiltrated by this. It's amazing. Even in our schools, the International, I can't ever say this, Baccarat Program is a UNICEF education program, straight from the U.N. that's in our schools, teaching international mindedness, no borders, tolerance, but it's all related. Remember, we're very easily deceived because we're very trusting people. But what makes me sad is it's taking place right here in our county. And because we're trusting, we don't think to look further. But there is a purpose for this, and it's not just, we bought in a sustainable community. We love it. We wouldn't change it for anything. But don't take my freedoms away. Don't tell me I can't drive a car. Do you know that 88 percent of our farmland is gone because of this? The EPA, the FDA, all these organizations are pressing on our farms and taxing them and harassing them so much. Go to Farmageddon and look at it. There's going to be a dust tax. What farmer can farm without dust? This is all a made-up, it's all based on precautionary measure, feelings and emotion, and no science. And unfortunately, we've all fallen for it. So Richard and I have researched this, we knew about it. I saw wording that made me leery, is why we even came to the meeting. Stakeholders, smart growth, smart code, it's all in the U.N. agenda. So... So, basically, I'm not sure where this will go. You guys have invested a lot of time. I don't even know if you'll research it, but we could not not tell you what we felt like God was leading us to do. So, I hope that you'll take it. I hope it'll at least cause questions that you might research individually and at least consider... I mean, do you want to live within this area? Know that you cannot go outside of that and buy land? Eventually, that is the plan. And I just cannot imagine living in America and it being that way. Alabama is where I'm from, and I couldn't be more proud of them right now. The Senate, they just passed a bill, Senate Bill 477, and Governor Bentley signed it, saying that nobody can sign an agreement or do any business with anyone that is affiliated with Agenda 21. And I hope that that is a beginning for lots of states going across the US, but they are so far ahead of us, it's a battle. But anyway, I'm very proud of them. Texas, parts of Texas are working on it. It's really becoming more... People are more aware, people are waking up, and I just hope it's not too late. So, but do... I do appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Field. Okay, well? Yeah, and you can get up. Yes, grab a seat. Yes. Well, we've come a long way since last October when you asked staff to research form-based codes and TDRs. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the stakeholder group, spent a lot of hours, the staff, you all individually who met with us, the consultants, the Planning Commission. There's been a lot of work, the city attorney and his office. So, thanks to everyone. You have in front of you the final draft for our discussion tonight. You've got the two consultants, Caleb Rassico and Rick Priest are here. They're going to give you brief presentations. I've asked them to highlight the changes that have transpired since we started on this journey, so to speak, so that you'll be apprised of them. You've got in front of you three... In your pack, you should have three versions. The clean version is the one with the purple, probably orange cover on. That's the clean version. You've got two versions that are colored. The one that's in red is the one from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission spent three meetings on this, and all their changes were made in red so that you could see them. When the city attorney, and as you know, we always have the city attorney review the final draft, and the city attorney took the changes that the Planning Commission made, and then he in turn worked off of that and came up with the draft in purple. The purple draft is... The language is in purple. We took that and cleaned, made a clean copy of it. So, the clean copy has no color, which is just the clean. One other item I just want to bring to your attention is that the Planning Commission's draft was done over three meetings. They were great meetings. They went through it line by line. They had some good recommended changes. Those changes were made by a consensus of all the members. There was only one issue where there was a deviation in terms of vote, and that is the issue dealing with including single-family structures as part of the architectural standards. Caleb is going to discuss that as part of his presentation, so I won't get into it now. But just so you know, all the red was done with a unanimous consensus, with the exception of that one issue from the Planning Commission. Okay? So, with that, if you're ready, Caleb can start the presentation for us?
Which one is it? It's the form-based code.
This is the form-based code. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. As Kathy mentioned, we've been working on this form-based code for, I'd say, almost seven months now, so it's very good to finally come down towards the end. As you may remember, when we got started with this process, we were tasked on taking a variety of codes and zoning designations within that area that were really residual from Fulton County and creating something that would truly reflect the vision for the City of Milton that had emerged from the visioning study. And as you also remember, from the previous briefing that I did, we did this in such a way that we took the basic smart code, which is again a form-based code template, and did what we call a calibration of it to reflect the City of Milton's specific needs. And from going through the Planning Commission comments, you'll be able to see that we really did change quite a bit over the course of those seven months. And finally, to take those general zoning designations and to physically apply them to what is called a regulating plan for the greater Crab Apple area. And so, what I wanted to do tonight was talk to you about some of the major changes that have transpired and are reflected in this current code that you have before you, which is version number six. As Kathy mentioned, we have spent a lot of time thinking about what exactly should be in this form-based code through a series of stakeholder committee meetings, public presentations in the Crab Apple community, design review board presentations, a CZIM meeting, and the Joint Planning Commission meeting, and then many, many, many other meetings. And so, those are reflected in a series of fundamentally six major changes to the code. Now, we haven't changed anything associated with the structure of the ordinance. The version that we presented to you a while back is still fundamentally the same. It's divided into seven articles that go from very general, meaning how does a code work, what is the code about, to very specific, meaning the design of individual buildings. Article one, as I mentioned, is about what the legal parameters of this form-based code are. It talks about its intent, how it's applied, what is the process, what is the way density is calculated, and very importantly, what is the transfer development right mechanism. So, no changes there. However, there were some pretty substantial changes made in a few items to Article one. One of the first is that based on some of the comments that we received, we ended up excluding any designated historic building from your base density permission. What that means is if you own a property and you have a historic building on it, you will not be penalized for preserving it, which is seen as an incentive to make those properties remain. In addition, the other big change in this section is the incorporation of the TDR language, which Rick will talk about in a moment. Article two is about regulating plan, which essentially is how do we take all of these different parts of the form-based code and apply them geographically in Crab Apple area? It talks about the link between the map and the text and the map and the zoning ordinance. It talks about standards for complying with the map and then rezoning in this area, how that would have to occur. And then it incorporates existing buffer requirements. Again, so nothing new there. However, there were, again, a couple of major changes in this particular part of the code that came directly from our feedback that we've received over the course of the process. One of the most significant is that prior to the current version of the form-based code, the Community Development Director had the ability to administratively move some of the transect zones to address for a variety of conditions. After talking that over with the legal department, they feel that that is not appropriate, that would be essentially granting the rezoning power to that administrative official, and so that has been removed. Any change now of transect zones designations will have to go before the city council through the rezoning process. In addition, another change that occurred relevant to just exactly where these transect zones go is a series of amendments to the actual regulating plan. Some of these are amendments that were brought about by concerns from neighborhood residents in the area, and some of them, quite honestly, were some mapping errors that we had made in going from your current zoning to the form-based code zoning. Some of the most significant are that based on the feedback we received at the community open house, we created a new transect zone designation for Crab Apple Crossing and Crab Apple Station. This is called T4 restrictive, and essentially what it does is restrict all uses within those neighborhoods to what they have today. That was something that was very important to them, and so we created that new district and then we proposed rezoning those areas to it. In addition, at the request of property owners in the area and looking at the visioning study, we found that some of the properties that we had originally designated as T2, which you may recall is an agricultural designation, were really incorrect. The visioning plan showed new development on portions of Broadwell Road, portions of Mayfield Road, and areas adjacent to the lake. And so, what we did is we changed those from T2, which again is agricultural or rural, to what is called T4 and T4 Open. Again, no difference from the visioning study. We had just made an error, and so we've reflected it properly now in the current map that you have before you. In addition, a final change in this area is relevant to the City of Milton's buffer requirements. Now, as you know, the City of Milton has very strong buffer requirements between new development and existing communities. However, within this form-based code area, that language was amended so that within the code area, there is in fact no internal buffer requirements unless you are building adjacent to an existing neighborhood. So, for example, if you have an abutment to Six Hills or Kensington Farms or Waterside or any of the existing neighborhoods, you are still going to have to meet that standard. But internally, within the form-based code district core, that would not apply. Going down, Article three still mentions and still talks about what is the relationship between the public realm and new development in this area. It sets forth standards for the design of streets, the design of roadways, the design of sidewalks and trails, and talks exactly about what those need to be. However, this is also an area where several changes were made based on feedback throughout the process. One was that per the request of the Planning Commission, we went into the form-based code and really beefed up the language about equestrian trails. We had mentioned them sort of in passing previously, what we've gone in and we've made very strong language indicating that equestrian trails are appropriate. Equally significant, when we met with the city attorney, he requested that we incorporate language talking about the current city requirement for payment in lieu of trails. Why is this important? Well, this is important because although the regulating plan sets out the location where trails will have to go with development, it does create a mechanism where the developer doesn't have to build those trails as long as he or she dedicates a certain easement to those trails in the future. And so, what this does is embed into that the current provision for a payment to the City of Milton so that the City of Milton can come along when the network is more achievable and in fact build those trails per the current trail requirements. Article four is where we get into what I call the nitty-gritty of the form-based code. This talks about how buildings sit on their individual lots. It talks not just about where they sit, but how they relate to the streets, what do they look like, how are they landscaped, and very importantly, what is their function? So, no fundamental changes there. However, based on some feedback that we received from the Planning Commission, we did make a few pretty substantial changes in this part of the form-based code. One is that we tweaked some of the language that talked about the maximum sizes of buildings in Crab Apple. Currently, there is a requirement that says the maximum size of buildings is essentially twenty-five thousand square feet. Based on the Planning Commission directive, that was changed to a maximum building footprint size, which if you assume that buildings could be as high as three stories in certain areas, creates a much higher maximum building footprint there. But the idea was that certain uses, for example, small grocery stores, neighborhood drug stores, those kind of things, they are going to need a certain building footprint, and what we don't want to do is by limiting building size inadvertently prevent that building footprint from having uses on the upper floors. And so, again, what we did is we created a maximum building footprint that would allow for a Trader Joe's-type grocery store or a very, very large CVS-type grocery store while not penalizing the ability for offices or condominiums above. In addition, within this section, we incorporated all of that language I mentioned about the T4 restrictive, which again is intended to have the same design standards as the T4 zoning district, but doesn't allow any non-residential uses, again, to be compatible with what is currently the on-the-ground situation in the residential portions of Crab Apple Crossing and Crab Apple Station. In addition, another change within this area was that the first version of the code that you saw allowed by-right lodging, which to layman is a bed and breakfast facility. That was taken out of the by-right condition in the T2 and the T3, again, the primarily neighborhood areas, and made a use permit consistent with the council approval process. And then finally, the last major change in Article four was that the Planning Commission wanted us to incorporate language prohibiting invasive species from being planted in this area. So, what we did is we looked to the DOT and we said, "What kind of species do you prohibit?" We then took their list and referenced it, actually not even referenced it, copied it in this current code in Section 410.6. And one of the most major changes, in fact, in my mind, the most significant change that has occurred to Article four or anywhere in the form-based code is, as Kathy mentioned, the directive that we received from the Planning Commission on architectural standards. The previous draft that we presented to you did have architectural standards, but it had them in fundamentally two categories. There was a, I'll say, a lower bar of architectural standards that applied to all buildings, single-family, mixed-use, commercial, and the like. And there was initially a higher bar of standards that applied to commercial and mixed-use. The idea at the time was that, as I looked through your current code, I saw that you did not regulate single-family. You had a lot of builders who had single-family lots and had bought them under a certain condition. And so, in those initial drafts, we did not impose the higher standards on single-family. However, at the directive of the Planning Commission, this was changed so that in the current draft before you, these design standards, which essentially lay out six architectural styles that are mandatory, not only apply to the commercial, the mixed-use, the higher-intensity buildings, but they also do apply to the single-family residential, which is a major change. And then finally, we made a series of very small tweaks, grammatical in every case, to some of the tables, some of the definition sections, and then some of the architectural style sections. So, what I presented to you this evening are what I see as the fundamentally major content changes of the code, and I would love to answer any questions on them that you may have.
Okay. Open it up to questions for Caleb. Joe?
So, again, the compelling reason to add the higher standard for residential structures was based on what? The Planning Commission decided this?
Yes, sir.
So, a person who owns a piece of property in this area right now, who had decided ten years ago that they wanted to build their dream home someday, now has a set of design standards that they're going to have to adhere to if we pass this code.
If the current draft V6 was adopted, that is correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
Karen.
Lance?
Karen.
Go ahead, Karen.
And are the standards the same then for the residential as they are for commercial? They're not separate standards?
They're no longer separate. They were separate when I presented to you at the Joint Planning Commission and City Council informational meeting, I believe in April, but now they are one standard for all new buildings.
Why is that treating it all exactly the same? Why did they go from being separate standards to the exact same?
I can't speak for the Planning Commission's reasons.
Let me just jump in, although I'm certainly not on the Planning Commission. I was there, and if I can sort of explain, I think they felt that because there's single-families can be such a percentage of the structures being built in the village, that to exclude them, you wouldn't get that look that you were looking for to create a village, in that we would have no control over what the design looked like. It could end up being a very suburban design, for instance, as opposed to a village-type historic design. And by leaving out that segment of structures, you were not really... in the village, that to exclude them, you wouldn't get that look that you were looking for to create a village, in that we would have no control over what the design looked like. It could end up being a very suburban design, for instance, as opposed to a village-type historic design. And by leaving out that segment of structures, you were not really then going to make a cohesive grouping of buildings.
Well, I guess what I was asking though is why are the standards, I understand that we definitely need standards for the residential to make sure that they are compatible with the commercial, but I'm not sure that the standards need to be the exact same for the residential and the commercial.
Yeah, and you know, it was really a case of this issue not coming up till the end, until the Planning Commission's meeting. So we never really looked at these standards aside from having standards for offices and multifamily and mixed-use. We never really thought about a two-tier set of standards, I guess. So the standards that were in here were the ones that the Planning Commission felt that at the very least it should be attached to. But that issue of having two separate tiers of standards really didn't come up. It was just a matter of making sure all the buildings fell under a standard.
Because to me, there's a big difference in something, how something would look if it was in a T1 compared to a T4. The same residence could look, you know, to me, you have a lot more leeway depending on where it is, and you don't want it to get to the point that every single house looks exactly the same, because then that hurts the values of everything also.
When, again, when we had, when it was drafted the first time, we did have some standards for single-family. There were essentially some material restrictions, really similar to what you have, some details on what you could do in porches, but they weren't, they did not mandate that single-family homes had to be a certain architectural style, which the Planning Commission felt was important to what they wanted to see in the code.
Now, was this a split Planning Commission?
Yes, it was four to three. And I will say that it was a very spirited discussion, but those that voted on the for side felt that, at the very least, that they wanted to bring this issue before the council. So some were in favor, for the virtue of being in favor. I think others expressed the thought, well, they were going to vote for it because they really wanted this issue to be addressed by the City Council. If I can sort of summarize what was said.
To this same point here, you and I discussed that these design standards have been developed by one architect, and mostly his vision. And we talked about how we could probably open this up to the extent where we could get some other architectural, compatible architectural designs that would be a part of this code. And how would you address that? How could we make that happen?
Well, I guess we could go back to the architectural standards that are listed in the back here in Article 7, and look at how we could make it more compatible for a single-family type of structure as opposed to a more commercial, larger-style structure. We haven't done that exercise, so it's certainly something that could be done. Or alternatively, what we could do is that as the plans came forward, you know, as the Community Development Director, there is some latitude there in terms of meeting the intent of the guy, of the standards, but not having to actually meet it precisely. So there's some interpretation there, and we could put in some language perhaps that would mandate that I would have the city architect also, in conjunction with the Community Development Director, review the architectural plans. Because there's going to be some subjectiveness with any plan that's submitted, because these are, they say they're standards, but they end up being guidelines, because when you're designing a building, you always have to look at the site or whatnot. So that subjectivity is going to be there. So I think if we had, we could put in something that had professional architectural review as well, and that might be a second way of going.
Matt, and Joe.
Yeah, on that note, if the residential provision was not in there, and some subdivision was coming in to build in Crab Apple, it would still have to go through a design review process, right?
No, no. No. See, that's, the only requirement that I could mandate is that they have rear-entry garages.
That's it?
That's it.
So the only type of regulation that they would then have would be whatever would be placed upon them by the homeowners association? That's it, okay.
Joe?
No, it was plans.
City architect, who was that?
Well, I mean, right now I have an architect who's on call, and I just referred him as a city architect.
And that is?
His name is Robert Buscemi, and he is a professional architect. He lives in Milton. He's had experience with form-based codes and architectural guidelines that go along with form-based codes.
And as far as the residential portion of this is concerned, I think one of the things is, again, I agree, we need architectural standards. I agree with Councilman Lufsk, and maybe there should be a little more diversity in the architecture that's developing these standards. I have respect for Lou Oliver, but I've dealt with a lot of architects, and different architects portray a lot of their own personality into their architecture as well. And I believe that it would be prudent to have a little more diversity, and also look at the economic impact that it would have on the types of structures that's going to be built there, or would require to be built there. And on the third point, as far as the interpretation, would that go through the Design Review Board as well on interpretation?
Right now, our ordinance does not require single-family homes, our normal process is that single-family homes are exempted. With the form-based code, it's still written in that they're exempted from going to the DRB. However, all structures are reviewed by the Community Development Director. So they wouldn't go to the DRB, but they would come to me. I would be doing the review.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Keep going. Just let Joe know.
Yeah, again, I think some, again, flexibility or some variation in the architectural standards, even talking about, I recently had some conversations about the Highway 9 overlay. I was talking about some sort of materials that I thought would look really good on the Public Safety Center, and find out that they're not even allowed because of what the code, and they're very perfect materials that would look, again, I put my personality into my design as well, so, but it would look very good, and because there isn't some diversity there that would allow, I mean, nothing you do is going to be perfect. I mean, I realize you set the guidelines, you have best intentions, all of that, but I believe really that in turn, those, these types of standards, that having some, a little more diversity in input of the people developing those, I think would be appropriate.
If I may, let me just ask, Caleb, in the warrant section, because I do have the ability for flexibility through the warrant process, would I have the ability to waive some of these?
So the architectural, definitely.
The architectural, if the intent was there, but they, you know, so I could have that ability to waive, and then if we put in some language about doing it in conjunction with an architect, just a thought.
And if I may add, the City of Sawani has a similar standard where they do have some requirements, and they allow you, if you're a developer, again, I don't know how we could fit this in here, but you can present alternative standards, subject to, I think they require Planning Commission approval in Sawani, but that may also be a mechanism that we can think about.
Joe?
Yeah, you brought up a very good point. One of the things that I was worried about, and I wanted to get your take on this, the two different deviations that you pointed out. One's the warrant, and one is the variance. Obviously, the variances are all controlled by the BZA, which is typical, you know, similar to other things that we have going on. Warrants, though, is that something new in what we'd be doing in Milton? Or do we have examples of where warrants, maybe by another name, are available to you as the community director to use your discretion?
Yeah, not, no, no.
So this would be a new concept?
That's right, yes.
The reason I bring that up is because I worry about standards, and you know, we've got, variances are controlled, and can, always great, you know, to remind us when we start talking about voting on a variance, what kind of discretion, what kind of limits we have related to that. And how are we going to be protected legally from a warrant that is granted to one person or one, you know, building, and then all of a sudden, somebody sees this as the exact same thing over here, yet the warrant isn't granted over here? Other than having the BZA to fall back on if they want to get a variance, how do we protect ourselves from all of a sudden interpreting things and using subjectivity as opposed to objectivity in that regard? And that may be a question directed at both of you guys.
Well, I can answer part of that. One, of course, is that you address it in that policy formulation stage. That's one, because the manifestation of what the council is comfortable giving by way of discretion is decided now. That's one way we protect ourselves, is that you decide whether to grant it or not. And number two, I would assume that your administrative decisions would still be subject to an appeal, would they not? So that's the second one.
Okay, so if warrant isn't granted, it can fall back on a variance.
There's still this typical administrative appellate rights that any other administrative decision.
Okay. All right. So that, I certainly understand that, and you know, whether or not you want that on your shoulders.
That's a policy issue.
You know, I'd have to think about that a little bit. But getting back to the architectural standards, I mean, you mentioned, not Steve Buscemi, it was his brother.
Bob.
Bob Buscemi. So he was the guy that provided the content related to the architectural control standards themselves?
No, no, no. Lou Oliver wrote these.
Okay.
Okay. However, realizing that should this come about, as well as we now have a form, an HPC, so that we, the city needs some design review, professional design review services. So in anticipation of all these needs, I have an on-call contract now with Bob, and it could be someone else in the future, or we could have a permanent position or whatever, but I feel that the city needs a professional architect on call so that as things such as this comes through, because I can imagine developers coming in for the form-based code and with their architect, and looking at these architectural standards. Well, I feel, I'm not an architect, I'm a planner, but I, so I need some professional assistance to guide us, to make sure that we, make sure that the city has the best.
Okay. No, I understand that.
Is possible, yes.
So, I mean, I think what I was looking at is multiple eyes, and you know, we've gotten a couple of things about this.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind actually putting it into the code to ensure, because I'm not here, you know, in the future, you may want to institute that, institutionalize that review process. I guess maybe that's.
I mean, with this, the changes that were made late-stage, do you think the document itself is still in keeping with the spirit of what the stakeholder committee and what the citizens that participated in some of the open meetings that we had related to this? You think we're still on track with that? You don't think we've deviated too much?
Oh, no, no, absolutely not. I think the only thing that came up late in the game was this very issue about the single-family homes, and that really is the only issue that I think that is out there. All the others were very good changes that really enhanced the document. It didn't bring up an issue that can go either way. They were just good changes, I think, that went through.
Okay, I've got some other questions that are related to TDRs, but I want to save those until after the next part of this presentation, but except for one. And that is, with all the standards and the processes that we've outlined, and the warrants and the variances and everything, what don't we have in this code? If we were to take TDRs out of this, because I sort of see this as us connecting an apple and a banana together for some reason, it doesn't make any sense to me, what don't we have in this document that TDRs, that requires us to latch TDRs onto this? Because to me, it doesn't make any sense why these two things are connected.
Okay. Do you want to talk a little about the density yield? It goes to density, in the sense that this form-based code is giving you a baseline of zoning, okay? Well.
No, I understand, I understand that piece of it, but.
Yeah, and the rest of it is being provided through the TDR, but no, I mean, you don't need the TDR to make the form-based code a reality.
So why are these connected then? Why are they put together in one document? Because we can't vote on one thing without voting on the other.
Yes, that's right, because we originally thought that we'd have a separate TDR ordinance that could be citywide. And Rick will explain to you why he felt that it needed to go into this form-based code. And in the future, if we do another form-based code, we would put the TDR in as a chapter of it, because there's enough specifics that need to go with the area as opposed to going citywide.
Okay, well, the concern I have is, I happen to be a big believer in the form-based code. To me, it's like the next logical step in terms of what the overlay was trying to deliver. I sort of see it as a paint-by-numbers painting, and before form-based codes, we just had a list of, here are the colors you can use, but we didn't tell you where you could put them. And so sometimes you got a Mona Lisa, and other times you got something that looked like it was done by, you know, your first grader, which is equally good, but just different. So to me, the form-based code makes a lot of sense. It helps us understand what can go where. But I'm not going to be able to support that if the TDR is connected to its hip. To me, it just doesn't make any sense, and I would hate to see us, you know, lose the opportunity to put the form-based code into action, you know, just because of that. So, anyway, we should.
Bert?
Going back to the architectural standards for the single-family, I have some issues with that. It sounds like, if I heard some of the planning, your take was, some of the Planning Commission felt strongly in these seven architectural forms, and some of them were just, let's get it out there and throw it up on the table to discuss it. It sounds like, as you said, came out late in the game. Is there a perhaps better way still to get this intended result, other than saying we've got seven architectural styles for single-family houses in this area? I mean, I understand the reasoning behind it to get it to where it's all cohesive, but I just have a hard time getting around that for single-family residences.
Yeah, well, we could always go back and look at these in terms of single-family residences, and see if we can't open it up a little, I think, in terms of restrictions, and maybe look at it and see how we can sort of meet the intent without being as strict. I think that's what you're.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, like you said, I understand the reason behind it, trying to get to the end game, but sure, would, I just hate.
Yeah, and I'm sorry Lou wasn't here tonight, Lou Oliver. He's in Brooklyn doing a charrette, so I tried to get him here, but I couldn't get him. So I apologize.
Second, Bill, I just want to bring up, and I can see the intent of the Planning Commission. I agree myself that, you know, for the stakeholders and citizens and the council-supported vision of Crab Apple, if we limit it to only the non-residential buildings, and which the majority is residential, if we don't have some kind of standards for that, then it's really not, it's just a, it's one piece of the puzzle, it's not going to be cohesive. My question is, and to Karen's point, I don't see this, but maybe you guys can address this, even though you have the non-residential buildings and the styles and the ordinance on the residential ones, that doesn't necessarily, or does that necessarily mean that the residences are going to look just like the buildings? Or you just, you know, got the difference, do the property owners have enough leeway with architectural styles and, you know, give and take to where they can build something reasonable and they're not boxed in?
I think so. I mean, I'm not an architect, but I think that they're not, you know, they're talking about windows, and doors, and roof lines, and scale.
I want to say that they are, they are flexible enough. And, you know, one of the things that we did in this new version is we basically said, okay, these are your styles, you can do simplified interpretations of them for commercial mixed-use, and what basically that means, think of a Main Street. All the buildings on a Main Street are traditionally a cube, and they have details of a different style. One of them may have a Greek pedoman, or one of them may have Gothic windows. And so I do think they will look different, and I do think that the seven standards are pretty broad. You know, I basically took what Lou Oliver gave me and tried to make it more objective, that it would allow architectural flexibility. it more, more objective, that it would allow architectural flexibility within what are some pretty broad styles. I mean, one of the styles we have here is called vernacular, which is basically anything built in the area before 1940. You know, it can, it can look very different, depending on how you built it, so.
I guess my, my only concern with all the residential in the, in the Crab Apple area, with the only stipulation that it has to be rear entry garage, we may kind of lose our, our vision and what I believe, I don't know, the stakeholders and the.
And to clarify.
That have, that have participated, as well as the council.
To clarify, we never had a draft code that had zero standards for single-family. We had a much more limited set of standards for single-family than are in the current draft. Things that I felt were, were raising the bar, but we're going to be going all the way, if you will.
Okay. Phil?
All part of the same discussion, I guess, and it's a point that Joe brought up earlier, was to use the example that the property owner had a piece of dirt there, had owned it for several years, and now all of a sudden he's obligated to comply with recent codes or standards. And I don't think that's an unusual situation. I think it happens all of the time as codes and standards change. And one thing here recently, the state demanded, I guess, we're going through it, Carter's going here, relocate.
Of course he is. He's hiding right there.
Reviewing our streams, buffers and wetlands areas. So that could certainly affect a piece of property that a person has had for, for several years, that, having thought previously that he could build it in the area, now it's designated as a wetland, or the stream buffers have been increased. Other ones, impact fees, something that we impose on property owners now that didn't exist about 20 years ago, and that property owner purchased that piece of land. So I think we're all subject to changes like that over the course of time, and something we have to deal with, I guess. Being a strong property rights person I am, I can, I appreciate your point, but things do change.
Karen?
I've got some very specific questions. So, under the specific function and use table, page 35, there are certain things that we give absolute rights to, that I want to make sure that getting away from the use, we're not allowing something that would not be what we want. One is, it says accessory unit under A. I assume they still, they're allowed to have an accessory unit, but they still would have to meet certain setbacks and everything else?
Yes, yes, that's correct. They, they, and they also have to be, the, the primary home must be owned by the owner and inhabited by the owner.
And I assume that the accessory structures would also have to comply with some of the same building standards that the others.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And bus shelter, what exactly is, I think a bus shelter, I think of, you know, a place that all the buses go and stay at night. But I'm assuming this is a bus shelter, is more of a bus stop shelter?
Yes, yes. Where, where people wait for, for, for the bus stop.
Okay.
And, and you'll see on, on the rezoning coming in for the property next door, that we requested they put in two bus shelters to service each of their stops.
So it's, it's not really a shelter for a bus, it's a shelter for the people riding the bus?
That's right.
Okay. And then under elementary school and other childcare centers, we're just allowing them pretty much in all of it. And there's, you know, I mean, there may be areas that these two things aren't really appropriated.
Yes, and that's a very good point, because I, this is a great time for me to tell you that the, the planning commission and Alpharetta reviewed this, and they had a few comments on this page, and one of them was in terms of childcare, that it's allowed by right, and they would propose it be allowed by a use permit. And secondly, the elementary school, we, I'm not sure we could put a use permit, because usually elementary schools put in by the county.
Now, I'm talking about pri, there's private elementary schools, though, and I, I mean, to me, those shouldn't be allowed by right. Those should be required to have a, a use permit, yeah.
And we can easily change both of them, and that certainly makes sense, and we would certainly support that for, for both, to, to do a, a use permit for those. I, I'll tell you that the planning commission also thought cemetery should be changed from, and that's under F, other civil support section, cemetery allowed by right in the T2, they thought that should be a use permit.
I agree with them.
And, um, let's see, cemetery, childcare, and kennels. Now, kennels are allowed by right in our current AG1, they're allowed by right in here, but you can go either way on that one, so it's.
But, but, well, I mean, to me, you don't want, you shouldn't allow a kennel to go in the middle of a subdivision type thing, which this is pretty much going to be. So to me, that needs to be a.
U.
Yeah.
Okay.
A used to. I mean, it's different if it's an AG1 zone property, and these are not AG1 zone properties, these are, you know, one acre properties, so.
Okay, so I've got kennel to a U, cemetery to a U, elementary school and childcare center, both to use.
Can I just ask a question? What about high schools and middle schools?
Well, they're already, well, it says by.
By warrant, so you're going to have more restricted by a use permit versus a warrant. I'm just thinking, there usually a high school would have more impact.
Then they need to be by a use permit, then.
Okay.
Oh, we have Kings Ridge, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want.
Is, is that, are those changes supported by the council just in general? I know we're not voting on this, and we can change it next week, but.
Yes, of course.
Everybody sort of on board with that, just, just guidance, or?
Okay, so, so I change all schools then, from college down, the whole?
Yeah.
To all, all use?
To use.
Small.
That's what we have now, so.
Yeah.
Matt?
Just an unusual question, I think, of what if, what if Historical Preservation Commission withdraws McGathan and declares the Crab Apple area a historical district? How would that affect these disorders?
Good question. And we're assuming that will happen at some point, I mean, that's their goal, so we've accommodated that, in, in the sense that when and if a historic district does take place, the design review function would switch from the DRV to the HPC. And they would have review over single-family homes, because HPC gets that review, unlike the DRV.
Interesting. And, okay, and all my other questions are involving TDRs, so I'll let Joan take that one.
Okay. Curiosity, what's been built in Crab Apple, like Wieland's buildings? How much of, of the architectural standards that are set here in the, in the form-based code, what's been built out there, really, in here, or presented here to what's, what's being proposed here?
I'm sorry, what?
What's being proposed here, I mean, as far as the architectural style?
You're saying how is it different from what's existed?
Yeah.
It's, it's, I, you know, I, I, I think of their, their houses being a more of a suburban style, as opposed to like a Vickery style. If you go to Vickery, I think that's sort of, they, they, you know, they're more historic type style, so, and.
Well, Vickery has a fair amount of variation, especially when they go to their multifamily.
Right, right, they do, and, and, but, but that's a more historic, as opposed to the, I, I guess in terms of the materials and the roof line and things like that. I think that there is a difference.
You know, like anywhere where you, you're dealing with a lot of what's already been built there, as far as kind of meshing that.
Right, right.
In becomes somewhat of a.
Yeah, you'd have to have a transition area, for instance, and, you know, it, it, it can be done.
Phil?
Going back to Matt's point here about the historic district and review being done by the HPC, would we still use the city architect for review in those cases?
Yes, oh, I would, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions on this, this part, Caleb, or for staff?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, Rick, you want to recruit or consult?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to put this in the broadest possible perspective, because, oh, I'm sorry.
Now, you got it, thank you.
Thank you. The TDR components that are in the form-based code are designed to implement the preservation as well as the development aspects and goals of the Crab Apple vision, as well as your citywide comprehensive plan. And that's, that's the idea, is to not just look at the development side of things, but look at some of the preservation goals. So the regulations that are proposed in this form-based codes, code are pretty simple, but we've complicated it a little bit, because they are, there are two kinds of green space that are being proposed for preservation. Plus, we're looking at preserving areas within the Crab Apple planning area, as well as outside, citywide. So just a refresher, TDR works within a community's code, it's market-based, it's voluntary. The whole idea of it is to encourage the voluntary redirection of development away from places where you want little, or in some cases, no development, and in the areas that are appropriate for development. And of course, the buzzwords here are the place where you want less or no development, or the sending areas, the areas where you want more development, where development is appropriate, are called the receiving areas. And again, it's voluntary in the sense that the sending area property owners can simply say, I'm not interested in preserving my property in any fashion, I'm just going to use the underlying zoning. And in most cases, the underlying zoning in the sending area allows what it allows now, one unit per acre. However, if they should decide that they do want to participate, the most typical scenario is that a conservation easement is recorded, and once that, that conservation easement spells out and permanently puts in place the goals of, in this case, the Crab Apple or the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan, in perpetuity. And in return, the city issues TDRs, transferable development rights, which are a commodity which that property owner then gets to sell, and it's the proceeds from those sales that generates the motivation. Again, in the receiving area, the receiving area property owner has a choice. They can build up to baseline density with no TDR requirement, they can exceed baseline, but only by buying TDRs. However, by getting that additional development potential by buying those TDRs, they actually get more profit, and when the program works, they are motivated to do that. So just to let you know that you aren't alone in considering and using, considering using TDR. I know of over 240 programs from around the country, preserving almost a half a million acres so far. Georgia's got a couple of programs, including Chattahoochee Hill Country, the Atlanta Historic Preservation TDR Program, which has preserved a couple of important structures in the downtown. I don't know why it did that. Hmm.
Technical difficulties? I mean, there we go. Disappeared.
There we go. So, here we are in Milton. How, how are we proposing that at work in Milton? The property owners basically propose their sites as sending sites. Again, I, I mentioned that if they aren't interested, they won't be proposing them. Within the Crab Apple planning area, what they are basically, those property owners that qualify, or those, those properties that qualify are Zone T2. So they're already identified in the regulating plan. Outside of the Crab Apple planning area, they are identified or proposed by the property owners and approved if they meet criteria. And those criteria are broadly spelled out in the comprehensive plan, as being agriculturally, environmentally important, and contributing to open space preservation in general, environmental quality and rural character. And finally, those are the open space sites. The Park and Greenway sites are, would actually be those sites that are designated in adopted plans, as being appropriate for greenways, trails and parks. So I alluded before to the fact that we have two different kinds of green space that we're concerned about here. One is called open space. The open space sending sites are areas where the property owners say, we're interested, but we want to continue to own the property, we're willing to, are recording easement, a conservation easement on our property. And when they do that, that conservation easement basically reduces the perpetual or the in-perpetuity density on that site to one dwelling unit per parcel, or one dwelling unit per 25 acres, whichever is greater. So the main intention is to reduce density. These sites, under the current draft, have to be at least five acres in size. And I'll pause at that point and mention that early on with the stakeholders, there was discussion of, well, should this be five acres, should this be 10 acres? The trade-offs there are that 10 acres, obviously, when people take advantage of the program, the impact is going to be more noticeable, because you won't have any property, properties that are under the program preserved that'll, that would be, have less, or I should say more, density than one unit per 10 acres. The downside of 10 acres is that it reduces the number of property owners who can qualify. And the, the sheet that Kathy passed out today demonstrates that, when you, when you go from minimum lot size of 10 acres to minimum lot size of five acres, it more than doubles the number of property owners who would qualify for the program if they chose to again. So that's the, the first kind of, of sending areas, the open space sending area. Again, property owner retains ownership, voluntarily records an easement. The other one is where the property owner says, I'm interested in actually transferring title of this property to the city for park purposes, for greenway purposes, and that is reflected, or I should say, the differences are reflected in the TDR allocation ratios that are spelled out in the form-based code as it currently exists. In other words, if you're only recording a conservation easement on the property, you get a formula, that's the upper half of this slide, which is one TDR for every unconstrained acre, or one TDR for every four constrained acres, meaning land that has surface water, streams, wetlands, plus one TDR for every five acres of lot size greater than five acres. When a property owner goes that extra mile and says, I'm going to actually transfer title, they get one of two bonus ratios. In addition to that initial calculation, a typical greenway sending site, meaning one that's identified in an adopted plan as a greenway or as a park site, is given 1.25 multiplication factor. In other words, they get that many more TDRs allocated to them to sell. If in fact it's a civic, civic space, it's 1.5. Now, I've got some examples that I won't go into, I can come back to them if you want to see how those ratios play out in terms of, of increasing the number of TDRs that a property owner gets, based on various hypothetical examples. Moving on to the receiving areas. increasing the number of TDRs that a property owner gets based on various hypothetical examples. Moving on to the receiving areas. In the receiving areas, you remember, that's the areas that are appropriate for growth. Within the Crab Apple Planning Area, it's very easy to identify qualifying receiving areas because they've been mapped for us in the Form-Based Code. They're the T3, T4, and T5 zones. However, citywide, it's possible that with future rezonings, such as in the southeast Milton, the Deerfield Road area, the Arnold Mill Road area, if, in fact, the TDR program is working well in Crab Apple and you want to replicate that program, easily done. You can grow the number of receiving areas over time as you change your code. Just to refresh your memory on how this works, within each of those T3, 4, and 5, there's a baseline. You can, the developers can achieve baseline with no TDR requirement. They can exceed it, and each TDR they bring to the table gets them two bonus building units. And, of course, they can only go up to the maximum that's allowed in that zone. So, here's a T4 example. The baseline here is five building units per acre. The maximum is nine building units per acre. The bonus, when each TDR allows two additional bonnet of building units, two TDRs per acre would get them up to the maximum of nine building units per acre. And the same rationale applies when you have a non-residential property in mind. One last thing I'd like to point out is that there is a, a possible problem in TDR programs when developers can't, have trouble finding TDRs on the market and can't exceed baseline when they want to. The way the code is written now, the only way to comply would be with actual TDRs. However, there is a provision that's in the code. Should the city council, on advice of staff, determine that developers were, in fact, having trouble finding TDRs on the open market, that you could have what's called a density transfer charge, which is a legislated amount, cash and lieu that they can pay. This cash would be used exclusively for the acquisition of easements and sending site properties or for program administration. It also helps to provide matching funds for grants and so forth. Admittedly, the, the benefits of a DTC option are that it always assures developers that they'll be able to exceed baseline as long as they can write a check for that amount. The disadvantages are that it sets, basically, a ceiling on the private market for TDR prices. And, of course, it has to be adjusted over time to make sure it, it tracks with real estate value fluctuations. And bear in mind, though, that this is not, the way the code is written out is not triggered now. It'd only be triggered if the city council decides to actually create a DTC in the future. So, with that, all that and our questions?
I, both Rick, you and Kathy, maybe just clarify something. Part of this was brought up comments, public, public comments and concerns and the conversations I've had. I want to clarify that, or make sure that, you know, these TDRs, this proposal is totally voluntary, and that we're also, we're not down, downzoning. We're not taking, people that have existing property now, we're not dropping what they can do with it legally. It's only allowing them, if they choose to, to buy the TDR and, and develop more density on their property. But we're not taking the, we're not putting in effect somewhere where they're having to buy a TDR to put the same density on.
That's right. There's no, no downzoning involved in this particular TDR program. In fact, about, about a month into it, we made one revision because it came to our attention that there was a non-residential property that had entitlement, so that, that adjustment was made specifically so that we wouldn't be downzoning anyone.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for the presentation. You answered some questions that I had about TDRs. They're complex. Anytime you have to use formulas and use words like ratios and things like that, you know, it's just not simple. So, I appreciate that, that effort. But I, I don't understand why they had to exist in the first place, okay? And the, the very last slide that you put up there, if you could flip back one, is a perfect example. Right now, we have a, a zoning system that provides for a certain amount of density in specific areas. It's something that our Comprehensive Planning Committee worked very, very hard on. I mean, I wouldn't say that committee, you know, met for four years putting that document together. It's a lot of effort went into that. And that's reflected in the, the current plan for the Crab Apple area. It's, it's the underlying need of what we, you know, what was established. And so, if we need more density, why don't we just charge the developer to put more density there? Why do we have to create this complex system of TDRs? And, and transfer is sort of a misnomer. It's transferred is what it really is because it only can really happen once. And I just don't understand why we have to have this complex system to support giving the people that make this city go the opportunity to do what they need to do. It's, we're, we're restricting ourselves in the future for some short-term benefit, and it, and it just doesn't make any sense to me. So, while I appreciate the, the effort that went into all that, I, I just, I can't get over this idea that we're creating some monstrosity that we don't need to create in the first place. So...
If, if I can...
That was more of a statement than a question, so I apologize.
If I could make my pitch for TDR. I, as, as I said right at the start, I mean, TDR is a way of trying to implement the preservation as well as the development side of your, of your planning goals. And part of the Crab Apple Plan involved, you know, open space, part of your comprehensive plan involves preserving the rural character and the, you know, the horse culture of Milton, so, so on and so forth. Now, obviously, TDR is not the only way of doing that. You know, you can raise open space bonds, you can use tax money and so on and so forth. This is one way of doing it with, by, by taking some of the additional profit that comes out of the additional density that's being granted here, and using that to implement not just the development portion, but also the preservation portion of your goals.
Maybe if I can ask a question or whatever. I missed your point, but I think I understand that, that, you know, most, everybody lives in Milton, likes the, whether you live in Crab Apple, whether you live on a farm, whether you live in an apartment, whether you live in a town home, quarter acre lot, whatever. I think part of the appeal of Milton is the rural and the horse farms and this and that. To me, this is a voluntary way for two parties to make that happen without the city forcing them to do that with land plan or whatever. Right now, if, I don't, if we have any land, it can't be developed at minimum of one acre home sites. So, if every, you know, horse farm owner or property owner wanted to sell out and develop, then pretty soon, it's nothing but one acre home sites and, and more density. Whereas this would allow to keep some pocket areas where those property owners would be compensated for transferring their land rights over to not develop it, and giving someone that wants to buy those TDRs and develop more on their property in another area. So, to me, it's either you go spread it all out, or you're going to make it more dense here and keep more open spaces and, and have a little bit of variety. So, does that make sense?
No, couldn't have said it better. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess, Joe, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, the, the underlying basis is that density is a finite resource. In other words, in all of Milton, let's say there's only 10,000 density units that, that are available. So, so this is just a, a purchase and an allocation of those units into wherever the market decides they need to go, or more importantly, where the developer decides they need to go, okay? But to me, you know, first of all, we, we won't lose the character of Milton unless we want to lose the character of Milton. So, so the question here is, do we have enough wisdom and enough foresight to force ourselves into a situation where we're dictating our future actions? Okay? Because what TDRs do is they put handcuffs on us. They won't allow us to do certain things in the future. And to me, I don't, I don't want to pretend like I've got that much wisdom. I don't want to pretend like I can, I've got a crystal ball and I can say, "You know what, 25 years from now? I know for a fact we won't need flexibility. So, let's put this TDR system into place and let's, you know, handcuff us for the rest of, you know, eternity, or until the law provides us a provision to do away with the TDRs and do what we want to do anyway." So, so to me, it's, it's, just doesn't make any sense.
And the only thing I would say respectfully on that, I don't think we can control or preserve Milton. Yeah, and this is only if, if everybody that had five, 10 acres decided to sell and develop. No, there's nothing we can do about it. Whereas this, this would be a way that we could. Karen?
A couple of things. In the past, I have seen TDRs used to try to limit development, and I've seen TDRs used to try to encourage conservation of green space. I, I don't agree with TDRs to limit development. I very much agree with TDRs to try to preserve green space and open space. I think what happens a lot of times and what's happened 10, 15 years ago in Milton is we saw an awful lot of people who had to sell their property because they couldn't continue to pay even the taxes on large acres of property. And I think this is a way that gives those people, instead of having to sell out and have it all developed at one acre lots, it gives people the opportunity to be able to stay in their property, to sell off the rights to development, and keep that property preserved. Because it, if not, eventually, it will all get developed. I mean, there are not any 50 acre parcels in, in downtown Atlanta, and that's because the properties work too much. The same thing will happen out here eventually if we don't have some way of, of preserving it. So, as long as we're allowing people the baseline and the, giving the incentive up to a point, I think TDRs, even though they're very complicated and everything else, can work to actually really preserve some property in the, in the area and also give us some development in some areas that where it may be more appropriate than others.
Michelle?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the comp plan a little bit because during the comp plan process, as you know, we spent about four years looking on that and looked, and we met weekly at some point. And we did mention in the comp plan that we were going to explore TDRs and look at certain areas, receiving areas, for instance, Deerfield, Crab Apple, and Arnold Mill. So, that has been identified in the comp plan.
Good. Mayor? Go ahead.
Along the lines of preserving open space, I, I agree with what Councilman German had to say. I strongly believe that this needs to remain a market entity, that the city doesn't need to get involved in the program. I've been involved with the wetland, with the core and such, and, and been given, had developments that have been given rights to develop, convert wetlands by just donating to the Sahara Club or donating to this. It's just a matter of money. You know, I believe this should be a free market type thing, that you have people over here that, you know, want to preserve the area they have, and you have the people that do build cities, and that's developers and the builders, have the right, have a way of enhancing their density and develop. And it's going to be driven by demand. I heard you say where we want development to occur. I understand we try to influence it, and it is being influenced. I mean, it's already been influenced. But there is a certain force, market forces, that, that kind of shape things as well, and I believe it ought to be based on market forces.
Rather than the DTC?
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the way it's, it's fashioned now, and hopefully, that's the way it stays.
My concern is, too, I have had concerns, like Councilman Gori here, has about having it connected right now to the Form-Based Code, period. You know, it's either that with it or, you know, without, that could we consider the Form-Based Code and still address the TDRs on a separate basis if it took, you know, a little more time or something like that to pull out the TDR portion to give us a little more time to... Again, I know you could beat a horse to death, and how, how much time do we really need? We talked about that, the historic preservation code. And so, I, but I do believe it needs to be a, a, you know, free market type arrangement.
At the current firm, that's the, the way it's proposed now?
Yes.
Bill?
I'm not sure if he was talking about DTCs or not, but from what I've read, and I'd like to give legal opinion on it, perhaps from the legal history on it, but on the surface, it appears to be selling zoning. Is it...
Well, that's the thought that popped into my mind during the presentation, and that may not be what the expectation is. There may be some law out there I'm not familiar with, but when I see a direct grant of cash to a local government in exchange for density, which is typically something we award in our zoning, it's going to make me uneasy as well.
And that's just a, that's an option that's not part of it.
Well, yeah, and I, I did, we have Jamie Bicarowski, who's an attorney with the Land Use Clinic at University of Georgia. I, I asked her specifically to look at this question. She was pretty definite that it falls squarely within the Enabling Act because it's a voluntary program, and the cash and lieu is a way of facilitating the program, which is one of the ways in which, in fact, the enabling legislation allows cities to do. Now, that's not to say that, you know, we won't get questions just like you just raised. Yes.
I assume with parcels, it means tax parcel is how, is what the term parcel means.
Legal.
So, is, is it possible if people have, say, people, someone had three, four acre parcels that were adjacent to each other, they could combine those parcels and then make one larger parcel that could qualify for things?
Yes.
We think.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, because that, it looks, looking at this, you got some pretty big areas that were just in the 5 to 9.99. Those could be combined to go from red to blue?
Yes.
Yeah, but, but the thought was to, to include all the reds and blues, to go down to the five parcel size, because we wanted to show you that there weren't that many over 10 acres. And so, to, to really make this a bigger program, we, we thought it would be more effective to, to cut off to start at five acres.
But if somebody had, you know, four one acre parcels that they wanted to combine into one five acre parcel, they could do that to qualify.
That's right.
As long as there's only one structure on it.
As long as there's only one, or no structures on it.
There's no other one, yeah.
Correct. Exactly. Good point.
It seems like that this is a simple concept with a lot of details to, to put it into action. I have, and I understand it's not, and I have no interest in this, in this density transfer charge option because I just, you know, selling, selling zoning or selling your soul or whatever. You know, I mean, that's how I see that. But I, I do think that, that the TDRs, and when you get it back to what it really is, could, could benefit us. And it's, like you said, it's, it's very similar to stream mitigations. You sell some credits here to be able to do something here, and as a whole, globally, you, you, you're, you're good. So, that's, that's kind of my thoughts on it.
Yeah.
You know, where I, where I sit, I'm a big fan of the free markets. You know, being in that business every single day, I, I understand the role of prices, and I, I think that TDRs is a great option to be able to help not just determine where that development's going to go, but when. You know, there's going to be periods of time where development doesn't happen as such, and there'll be periods of time where it does, and that will help mitigate exactly when that should take place, and we're building up, not necessarily out. And we're building up, not necessarily out as well. We do have some control because of the, the baseline aspect. And if we run to a situation where we need more, we can always build up, which I think is a great feature. And that still maintains those properties that have been sold from their TDR perspective. And I respect that. You know, I, I feel bad for the great, great grandkids who wanted to build on that property, but that wasn't their right to begin with. You know, that wasn't their choice. So that's, my, my, my primary concern is a couple of things though, is who would broker the deals? You know, if there is a broker. We are essentially creating a, a security that is traded on an open market, essentially. You know, and, and in my industry, you're regulated by the SEC and FINRA and things like that on a regular basis. I don't know if there is such a regulatory entity that does that sort of thing, you know, with this.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna be in the business. Why don't you speak to that please, if you would, Rick, please?
Well, the, I mean, it is a city program. So when a property owner proposes a property as a sending site and it's, and it's deemed qualified and the, uh, the easement is recorded, it will be the city that's issuing the TDRs. And it'll be up to the property owner to find a buyer. The city could facilitate that with a website that shows here are people who've said they're interested in selling. Here are people who've said they're interested in buying, but those two have got to get together and find each other and consummate that sale. And the city obviously wants to track, uh, these TDRs as they change hands and formally extinguish them when they are actually used at a receiving site project. It's, uh, it's, the, the regulation as, as such is, is really, the biggest regulator in the process is the city itself.
But to clarify that, it's no, no more involvement with, the city's having no more involvement than if someone were selling the property and transferring it over as far as?
Yeah, I see it as an administrative, or, you know, we're gonna certify how many TDRs you're entitled to, how many, you know, do you have any wetlands? Well, that's one ratio as opposed to unconstrained. So, and so we'll be the accountant, so to speak, in terms of keeping track of that, but, and, and we'll certify your, your credits. But you need to go out and, and to the marketplace and, and get the best deal you can. And then let us know to whom you sold it so we can make sure that that developer is gonna use them and we can track the density.
But the easement's actually formally recorded on the, on the property down at Fulton County so that you can't, somebody can't come back in, you know, 100 years later, the great grandchild and say, oh no, it was, and it actually travels with the property.
Right, right.
And is there a tax on TDRs? Do you have a?
Well, the taxing implications are, the ones that I know for sure have to do with if you're selling the TDRs, they're a capital gain. You, you, you would owe taxes on whatever you made on the deal. Your property taxes to the sending site property owner should go down because you've basically reduced the value of your property. And in fact, the enabling legislation requires the assessor to take notice of that. Whether they are subject to, uh, the real estate transfer tax, uh, I've heard conflicting opinions about that. Then I, I gotta say, I, I don't know the answer to that right now.
But I'm interested that in Georgia, the Chattanooga Hills Conservancy in the city of Chattanooga Hills has already gone through that. I don't think many tax investors, and they can answer that question, but in short, you are subject to outdoor taxes. When that, whoever holds that TDR until such a time as it's transferred, you are subject to still paying taxes on that. So you're essentially not losing your tax value from that.
So we are essentially?
Can I just clarify one thing though? So basically, the, um, the property that sells the TDR, the property owner, the value of his property goes down because it can't?
Well, yes, and I, it's.
So the tax basis is lower revenue. But on the flip side, the purchaser of the TDR, that property value is more or should be more.
Exactly.
So it, it shouldn't be, it should be a wash or?
Right, and, and what was mentioned before is that during, in that interim period, the enabling legislation actually spells out that until they actually transfer ownership, that you're still, the sending area property owner is still taxed on that value.
And on the creation of these TDRs, you know, it's not just a one time, we're opening it up and that's it. You know, homeowners can have years to decide whether or not they want to take advantage of that? Or is it you have one time to do it, you gotta do it within 90 days or you miss the window?
Hadn't anticipated any, any windows, no.
Okay, so it's just, it's open until, so essentially though, if they, because if we didn't, what I want to make sure, maybe I'm, I'm just reading this, but if we, the homeowner doesn't constantly declare that they want to be eligible for a TDR, are they then taxed as though they would have a TDR? And is that, or is that just, that's a wash anyway?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused because let's say we got two property owners, a sending site and a receiving site. And the receiving site thinks that they need more density. They're not sure yet, but they think, they have a plan. So they go out and they buy twice the, the TDRs that they possess on the property today. Now, the sending site has shot itself in the head and decided that it's only ever gonna be a simple pasture, a patch of land, or whatever it is. The guy who's bought the TDR all of a sudden has these options, but he hasn't executed on any of them. He's still just, he, the, both properties look the same. Are you telling me that they're gonna tax the piece of property that has the extra TDRs now differently than the property that has, no?
Yeah, just like it would be, if a property has gone from being zoned residential to zoned commercial, then they tax up, they, they know when you get your property rezoned to commercial before you've ever even moved a, put a shovel on the ground, that it's zoned commercial and they're gonna tax you higher.
Yeah, but Karen, it's already zoned commercial.
Yeah, but they know of what density it's zoned for and you're taxed based on, on what they think you can, what the property's worth because it's worth more if it's.
And the receiver buy, if, if receiver buys these from the sender to dedicate it to a specific parcel or tract or something like that. So it's not, he's buying them to have in his pocket to use on X, Y, or Z. It, it's, 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 it's specific transfer from A to B, not seller A to B, but tract A to B. Is that correct?
The, um, the property, uh, the TDRs are taxed, remain as, uh, associated with the sending area property owner, and this is by the enabling legislation, I hope I'm remembering this correctly, until such time as it's either used at the receiving site or it's given a separate tax number. But it is not reflected in the receiving site until it's actually used.
Okay, so hold it. Let's just pretend for a second that this guy who's bought some TDRs because he has a plan on building something changes his mind. Now he doesn't, he doesn't want to build anything. He wants to be an open pasture, just like the guy he bought the TDRs from. But now he's got these extra TDRs, he can now sell them, right?
He can sell them, yeah.
So if I was a smart guy and wanted to take a little bit of risk, I would go and buy all the TDRs that I could, hoping at some point in time that somebody's gonna need them and I'd be the only guy with them.
And that's why we put the density transfer option in to, to.
No, no, what I heard about is some, some rich guy going out to 400 in the market.
There's no difference between some rich guy going out and buying vacant land and just sitting there and holding it for five, 10 years. Holding the value.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, a lot of people would love to have that kind of problem.
What's defined used? When you said it's used, something's going, they, they, you said that it's not taxed on the, the, the receiving area is not taxed until, on the higher rate until they're used. What is used?
Well, until the building, until the building is built with the extra density in it.
Does that mean that, that the seller of the TDR who has sold it and acquired the cash for the TDR would continue to be taxed on the density until such time as the developer who received it actually puts that into use as additional buildings?
Or until, and I don't have, I wish I had the enabling legislation with me, unless an additional tax number is created for the interim.
I just, the, the concern there would be that that would put the seller of the TDR at the mercy of the buyer.
I can introduce, this is Allison Duncan from the ARC and she's been helping us with this.
Right, and that's happened in the experience in, in the city of Chattanooga Hills. Chattanooga Hills Conservancy actually functions as intermediary in their TDR program. And so right now, they actually hold, um, two TDRs in the Safe Passage Box in Palma, Georgia. And so the person who's ever those TDRs from the property is no longer paying taxes on them. The Chattanooga Hills Conservancy is the holder of the TDRs is the one who pulls the county and said it's been responsible for taxes on until such a time as the developer comes and purchases them from the Conservancy to apply to a piece of property. So you're not losing that tax value in the interim until such a time as it's applied, as in the experience with Chattanooga Hills model of TDRs. But I think the benefit for Milton is that Chattanooga Hills has kind of already placed this trail of potential new taxes necessary to, so they utilize.
Question is, is Fulton County, uh, familiar enough with actually being able to handle this process? Because, you know, they're the ones that do, the guy that was here did those the assessments and understand that process. And then secondly, on the tax standpoint, I mean, wouldn't it make more logical sense that once it's, the TDR are purchased from the sending site, that that TDR be given some sort of tax number or something? And then that that value be taxed, I guess that's the millage rate, uh, current millage rate?
Sounds like that's what's happening in Chattahoochee Hills country.
Right, and I would need to really want to know that for sure what the, what the process is because the way the, the taxes are, I mean, the county gets a certain portion of that property tax, but the city gets a certain portion of that property tax too.
I've got another totally different question. On the sending sites, we have the open space sending sites and we have the park greenway sending sites. Well, if somebody wanted to give us, uh, wanted to sell their TDRs for a 100 acre parcel, then that may, uh, be more beneficial to us and we may want to make that a park or greenway sending site rather than just being an open space sending site because of the large amount of the, the land. It would, could become a park. Do we have some flexibility with it or is there any, um, you know, because it wasn't adjacent to a current park, would it not qualify?
Well, yeah, right now it, 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 it ties to an official city document.
Okay.
And so you would have to amend your, your, your parks plan to include that as, as a potential city park. And then, is that how you would?
Well, yes, but you can't, under TDR, you can't force, I mean, you can say, this would make a great park. Why, why instead of doing an easement, why don't you, we transfer title? But, but you can't through TDR make that happen.
Because if, if it was kept as just an open space or whatever, then the city residents wouldn't have, really have access to it because it would still be privately owned. Where if it became a, a park, then it, you know, residents, even if it was kept just as green space and total open space, could have access to it. So it might be more beneficial to the residents to have it as a.
That's true, but through this, through TDR alone, you can't, you can't force that to happen.
But they could sell the TDRs and then.
I mean, you, you could, you could wind up in a situation where one owner says, you know, I really love this pristine area. They, maybe they don't develop it. Then the next owner says, you know, I don't want this thing at all. I'd rather sell it to the city. Well, then, then they can deal with it, uh, you know, down the line. I mean, it could be a two-step proposition, but in one step, um, other than cajoling and, and trying to convince that property owner to deed the, the property over, uh, you can't make it happen.
But what I was saying though is we do have some flexibility if somebody wanted to do a 100 acre site or something. We could find a way to make it go from just being open space sending to a park or greenway space, greenway sending site, which would be more beneficial to them.
That, that goes to what Kathy was saying, yes, amend your plans.
And that's why we've given a premium, so 1.25 because a public easement is better than just a conservation easement.
Which we wouldn't want to do for a five acre site, but if it was a 100 acre site, it might be.
That would be voluntary.
Totally voluntary, but yeah.
Joe?
Yeah, um, I'm sure we could sit here a pretty long time talking about this. So rather than continue to ask questions about the TDRs themselves, I'm, I'm more concerned with, is it possible for us to get this portion of the Form Base Code separated? In other words, can we have two, two things that we vote on or are we intent on keeping them together is one thing? Because I haven't heard anything that compels us to keep them together, is my opinion.
I think, I'm sure, uh, last staff and city attorney, I, I don't think there would be any reason you'd have to. You could probably split them up, couldn't you?
I, I'm like Rick to.
Well, it's, there's no technical reason, but I, I think there's a, you know, practical reason. And that is that, um, how would, how would the Form Base Code read then? Would it read that baseline is maximum density until such time as the TDR program goes forward? And maybe it never goes forward and then you have to come back and amend the crab apple code. On the other hand, you wouldn't want to put in the Form Base Code the maximum density because once you basically allowed the maximum density, you've given up, uh, the ability to get that bonus density. Or you have this, this code that really can't be used for a while. I mean, that's one, that's probably the best of those three options, which is that, uh, you know, you have a baseline and you say unless and until a TDR program is adopted, uh, this is the, this is the maximum. It's just, it gets complicated when you.
Yeah, well, we're making a lot of assumptions. We're making the assumption that the Form Base Code is gonna pass, number one. Number two, we're making an assumption that the TDRs are required to implement the Form Base Code. And, and I didn't hear that earlier. So to me, it makes more sense for us to take something that I think needs a little bit more discussion, I would think needs a little bit more citizen input, and separate from something I think that we discussed quite a bit. This Form Base Code is a good thing. I think it's something that's needed, but I don't understand why we're, see, you said a Ghostbusters thing, crossing the streams here. I don't understand that.
The question, I thought you sort of directed it my way just a little bit, so I'll try to answer. Can, here's the, here's the answer. Can you draft a Form Base Code in Georgia without including a TDR component? The answer is yes. To the extent this one has been sort of symbiotically put together, can they be detached at this point? Yeah, they can be. It'll take a little work from staff. We'll have to go in there, because he's right. Right now, they've sort of been built with the notion that the, the streams will be crossed. But you can uncross the streams and you could, uh, you could bifurcate them if you wanted to and then just do them separately.
But I certainly, I, I do see your point. You know, we need to have the baseline that's at least or better than what the existing density is for property owners now. But you don't want to have the max in there unless you're getting the benefit of having some preservancy. I, I personally would just assume here both at, at the same time next week. But it depends on, you know, council.
I mean, I think a lot of the people who are apprehensive about the TDRs don't really understand them. So I think if people will take the time to get with staff, get the questions answered, then, you know, they will understand that it, it is totally voluntary. No one is being made to do anything. And that it is a way to, to preserve some of the open space in the city.
You've mentioned the Chattahoochee Hills Conservatory Group. Who makes that group up?
It's a private nonprofit organization that acts sort of as a, as a bank that grows, that's what you call it.
Now they do, yes, because they hold those TDRs.
So they, they act as kind of intermediary between the, the person who wants to settle the development rise and the developer holding it.
So it's not a governmental, not affiliated with the city or any of them? That's all I got.
And if you have questions, I can certainly put you in contact through Kathy with their, their, I guess chairman would be, who actually?
Yeah, who we met with, that's right.
Michelle?
Oh, yeah, so one thing I'd like to add after I've spoken with all the Fulton County staff is that they said that in Chattahoochee Hills, they had a lot of people who wanted to sell TDRs and didn't have any buyers of TDRs. The difference in Milton is we have people wanting to sell TDRs and we have people wanting to buy TDRs. So we don't have that place where we have to store TDRs per se, like we already have both sides of the market.
Right, and the city of Atlanta, the other model that you have for TDRs, they don't use an intermediary organization. It's simply that the willing sellers will buy or come together and they facilitate that transaction. come together, and they facilitate that transaction completely without an intermediary bargaining session. And that actually has some very recent transfers in addition to the pictures Rick has shown, the hotel that's being built in Midtown right now that requires some development rights. You can use it not only for store properties, but for properties as well. They're adding a couple of extra floors on top of it. So, it's very viable. It's a very active program. Questions, it is an active program. And I can certainly link to the book, and see that we're handling any sort of questions about how that program works.
Okay. Any other comments? Joe, Matt?
Just through Thomas's as well. You know, I'm familiar with the agenda twenty-one. Everyone's out in Texas, understand that very well, and I'm not a big fan of the United Nations whatsoever. Big entities, you know, government control is not what we're trying to do here. You know, I'm a big believer in the role of prices and free market. Thomas Sowell, six hundred pages of basic economics, Milton Friedman, the Ludwig von Mises Institute, Human Action. What we're talking about here is trying to create a system that allows for, for the free market to take control over the economics of the scarce use of, the use of scarce resources, which is land, as well as the construction on that land. And, you know, just to bring that up, when I looked at this, you take a look at it, you know, I'm for it, but because I don't see us as a government trying to control it. I don't see that. I see the citizens still being in charge of the right to develop or not, and we want them to have that. And, you know, is there speculation that could happen with TDRs? Absolutely. And that's the free market. You know, speculators make money as much as they lose it. I see it every day in the markets. And so, I think that's actually a good thing, because there would be times a lot of people may want to jump in and buy these TDRs, and then the prices aren't there to support that, and then all of a sudden, if they have to sell, the prices will drop. And it may be skewed at first. This is a process, as we're taking baby steps. I can see us learning together as a community as we go through it. But really, it's a matter of us, I think, as council, trying to give it, give the, really more power to the citizens, really, the people at Crab Apple, so they can control the development of their own area. And that, to me, excites me, because I think the potential of the people in Crab Apple is fantastic. You know, they can determine what it is they want, and I don't want to limit that. I think that the current zoning that we have right now has the potential to limit that, and I'd like to free that a little more. So, in my way, I didn't want to just pass away. I know you're both very passionate about that. I just wanted to say that I did look at that, and I respect your thoughts on that. I'd love to know more about it, if you have any other objections or whatever, but I'm for it for those reasons. And philosophically, it's right. You know, I think more so than where we are today, in my mind. The process works, but it's, it could work better, and I think this will help us do that.
And I just see it, and again, I have total respect for everything, too, but I don't see it as, in fact, whereas I don't, I wouldn't favor getting into the transfer charge option. I don't want it to be something that the government's controlling. I look at it, and to your point, too, with, you know, taking property and making a change that can never be undone, and the grandkids one day not going to be able to do something with it. But it's just like, if you have a piece of property and you sell it now, your grandkids aren't going to have anything to do with it. I mean, for example, I've got a neighbor, don't know their situation, but they've got, you know, a hundred acres, and another one with thirty-five acres, and they're in their eighties, and the others are retired. Everybody loves to drive by and see that beautiful property. Now, the government or the other citizens shouldn't be able to tell them what to do with it. But if they choose to sell the rights to that, so that someone that buys the rights can develop more within reason, then, to me, that's a win-win, because then that property's still preserved, people can enjoy driving by it. They can take the money they get now and put that to somebody like you, and their grandkids will be fine, you know, one day.
Since it's young.
You know, I think it's a win-win, and I don't see us wanting to get in the middle of trying to control anybody.
May I say something? Or do we have that right?
Let me let Bill talk, and I'll be glad.
I think this is just another part of personal property rights, doing what you want to do with your own property. And I see it similar to selling mineral rights to property. You own those, and they have a value, obviously, and there are people out there that are willing to pay the freight. I see similarities here. I think it's a benefit of everything we said before. You don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think it benefits both the development side and the preservation side.
Is there any more comments from council or questions? What proper process we ought to do with public speaking is, this is our last item, so we can close this meeting, but we're certainly open to stick around and talk with you, and we're going to look at it. You know, this is coming back at the fore, so any input you have now, we can listen to. But I'd like to close the meeting and then have that be voluntary, if you don't mind. Okay? Thank you, Deb Drexler. Okay, sort of kind of.